Good afternoon, everyone. If you are unable to hear, if you'll raise your hand as we go through the meeting. We'll move the microphones around and so forth. Those of you that have never been to a meeting here before, the room, that back corner over there will have documents that you can follow the agenda. And thank you for being here. The second item on the agenda is to have a public hearing in regard to the flood insurance map and... We already got people can't hear.
There are no more documents back there.
There are no more documents back there.
So we can follow the agenda.
Alrighty. Madam Clerk, can you get somebody to run some more?
I can, but the amount of documents that are back there would be another... It took me an hour to run the first one, so...
I think it's the agenda everybody needs.
If you want the agenda, we could definitely do the agenda. Sure can.
Alright, we'll be working on that, but we'll go ahead and move ahead with our meeting. The public hearing part of the flood maps, Mr. Hewitt, are you gonna do that or...
That's Mr. Evans.
Mr. Evans. Mr. Evans, our building inspector in many other hats, full of knowledge.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I spent a lot of time trying to figure out what I wanted to say, but I can make it pretty brief. It's gonna be an awful lot of angry disappointed people if you don't pass this ordinance.
Thanks for setting the stage.
Yeah. Starting sometime back, latter parts of 2014, 2015, we were made aware that the new map, flood maps were coming out. We tried to keep everybody abreast. I've done at least five presentations on everything from the letter of final determination to even giving a short, brief how-to, go to the website and look up, see what you had as far as your new designation would be. The town has worked on this for three years. The ordinance is a federal model ordinance, that's the coastal version, which is what we had, which is very little difference between what we have and what we have now. The differences are those that are required. The North Carolina Department of Public Safety, who would approve your model ordinance so that you can get insurance, has actually reviewed this document twice and said that they feel like that they could approve it if it came to them. So we have kind of a preapproval based on what the town approves. The ordinance does have some changes, but like I said, those changes are part of the new model ordinance. The biggest problem with the new model ordinance is going to be the new building codes that come out that'll be effective. They're effective now, but there's not mandatory that you use them until January of 2019. The new building code and the new model ordinance, because the state now works with FEMA hand in hand, have got some components that are actually interlocked and will take some things that are in the technical bulletin that used to be what we call prescript... used to be prescriptive, and they're now going to be, some of them be performance and some become prescriptive, which means that some you could engineer you now can't do unless you do it exactly the way they say so. So the ordinance itself, and what I'm trying to tell you is, is that even though there's changes in the ordinance, regardless of whether you adopted this ordinance or not, with the changes in it, you're still gonna be doing it in February of 2019. The difference is, is you don't get points for the CRS unless it's in your model ordinance. Your model ordinance, these few changes that are in here based off of the new building code that you were gonna have to apply for anyway, are going to give us better points on the CRS, are giving us more points. So those are... that's pretty much the difference. I'm sure the commissioners have read it. The attorney has verified it with the North Carolina Department of Public Safety, so it is stat... we also carry this information to the planning board. The planning board wrote a consistency statement. I think that, and they are good with what we had, the... there are some differences between this ordinance and the one that went with... to them for the prescriptive, I mean for their consistency statement, but they were only bringing over technical bulletin information. That's the only difference. The technical bulletins were already referenced. The North Carolina Department of Public Safety's looked at it, said it's not a significant difference, and so has our attorney. So that, that's what you have. I would recommend that you pass it today. Any questions?
Commissioners?
So, in a nutshell, the document that we're going to vote on today has been preapproved by FEMA so that...
We have an email that says that they feel like they can send this forward if we approve it.
So we adopt today, it's going to be approved, and we're good, despite the differences between the existing one and this...
Right. Well, they're aware of it. We had them review it before we did.
Okay.
Yes.
But you're... Correct me if I'm wrong, you're saying that that was from their... this is their recommendation?
The ordinance that we have is the model federal ordinance, okay? The... so that's what we have, is the model coastal version of the federal ordinance, the most current model ordinance.
The ordinance that we have, that we're voting on, C, basically?
Right.
Okay. Because there are some changes, pretty significant, you know, one year to two-year, if you're doing...
Substantial improvement.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's one year for manufacturer, it's two years for residential, yes.
So...
If you do more than 50 percent within a two-year period.
It used to be one year, right?
It used to be one year.
Yes.
That shouldn't affect a whole lot of people because everybody came down. In other words, the way that affected you was, is that if you were in a... a pre-farm house, it didn't change at all, but if you were in a house where the ordinance had changed, right, and the flood zone had gone up, and you were going to do substantial improvement, then you would be required to raise it up to that level if the work that you wanted to do exceeds 50 percent the value of the structure, okay? Well, in this particular case, we have 1,400 properties that are coming down, which means that most of them are already up higher than what they're gonna be now. So the impact of that should be minimal to go to two years. It gives you a lot of points on the CRS, so on addition to the fact that your house has now come down, when we get a new CRS evaluation, it will actually give us a better insurance rate. So now you've come down, you get better, and because you've got this new substantial improvement, you're getting more points. If we could somehow get a better rating, and this is the way you do it with your points, then you're gonna get a double win me on a refund or see a deduction in your insurance. Yeah. Okay?
Can you... Do you know anything about this coastal, you know, there's now gonna be a coastal designation as far as the properties?
I'm not sure what you're asking.
You know, the zone is gonna be... my understanding is there's gonna be a coastal designation different than the flood zones off the beach?
They have V zones over there just like we do, they may not have wave action, but they have V zones... they have A zones just like we do over there, but they may not be wave action.
Okay.
The zones aren't gonna change from one to the other. We do have one thing that doesn't matter, because it got... it's in here, but it got picked up by the building code too. We have now what's called limited wave action, which basically says that if you're in a situation like Scotch bonnet, where the water can rise, if you're already in a V zone, and they recognize that as being a wave action area, you've gone into an A zone, so now it's considered a limwa, which is limited wave action, which means that you get the reduction for being in the A compared to the V, but when you build your structure, you're gonna have to put... break away walls because you have wave action and flood vents, which is not uncommon now either anyway, because insurance companies have been given credit for putting flood vents in V zones anyway for a long time now, and even recommending it in some cases or requiring it, so...
What would be the impact if we wanted to change this, any, you know, in any detail within this in the future? Is that possible?
Yeah, you can come back and do it. We can... you can actually come back and do a text amendment if you wanted to go back and change it. You can do it just as soon as we get it off to them and they see it. You can make changes to it just like you can anything else. What you can't, what you gotta be careful of, is doing something that'll affect your CRS rating and nullify any credit you get because you just went into an A zone by driving the insurance up. So you gotta be careful. I guess we would, we would look out for that, but, but you can make changes later. It would require the same action that we took. We just went through a lot of stuff with consistency statements and that kind of stuff. I understand that there's been law that's been actually initiated in Raleigh to make sure that whenever you wanna adopt or amend a flood zone from now on, that it goes back to the way it was before, where it simply becomes a regulatory ordinance, and the board can review it without having to go through all these zoning requirements. But that's on the table right now, they're working on that, but we would have to take it back to the planning board, any kind of changes.
Right.
And it would have to go through that same process again.
So you're saying that what we have now has been reviewed by the staff, yourself, and the attorney?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. The staff, this document was not drawn up. This document was drawn up by the North Carolina Department of Public Safety. It was reviewed by the town's attorney, re-reviewed by her. She called Randy Munt, Dan Brumaker, and talked to Terry Fox, as I understand it, and they all concurred that this is the document that we needed to pass.
And you concur as well?
Yes.
Any more questions or comments from the commissioners? David's staff, before we open it to public comment? Thank you, Mr. Evans. Alright, we're now gonna move to the public comment area, where if you will raise your hand.
Point of order, sir, are we, are we gonna vote on that? Are we gonna circle back on item three?
You wanna vote on it before the public comment?
Well, so, so let's reorder, so we're gonna readdress three, that's all I'm asking, after the public comments.
We do whatever you wanna do.
I'm good with that, but I just didn't wanna...
Make sure we have the justice.
Right.
No, no, the public comments on agenda items, item four, related to the items we added that weren't part of the public hearing. So I think what the mayor is saying is this is public comments on the public hearing section.
That's fine, but I just wanna make sure we're gonna vote on...
Of course, yeah.
Three. Okay.
Public comments.
Okay, go ahead, public comments. Okay. To review again, we're gonna open the floor for public comments. If you will raise your hand to be recognized, come to the podium where Mr. Evans is, speak into the microphone, give us your name and your address, and speak. Are we operating under the three-minute rule, Madam Clerk?
For the public hearing, I don't believe we do unless that was changed. I don't remember reading that was changed.
Have your commissioners changed that or not?
This isn't the public comment, you were right, this is the public hearing, and we've never done time limits for the hearing that I'm aware of off the top of my head. So there wouldn't be the time limit on the hearing, but when we get to the comment part, there will be.
Okay. Everybody understand what we're doing? If you do labor too long, the chair does, you know, respect the right to ask you to summarize. All right, anyone wanna speak?
I would've thought we could have questions from the audience, but...
Dennis Harrington, 188 Greensboro Street. I have a question. This new flood ordinances, how does that impact or affect the current base flood plane and the building height on that?
We, our buildings are designed based off a two-foot free board from the BFE. All the BFEs are coming down. So it, what it does is, is that we still measure it the same way. So the houses, if you're in an area where it drops two feet, okay, in the height of your house, it should be two feet lower than the one next to you if that's what it is, because we're still measuring exactly 31 feet from the DFE.
Thank you, Mr. Harrington. Anyone else? I see a hand, I can't see a face. Okay?
I just have a question.
Alright.
Christine Potter, 114 Seaside. Could you explain again about the structural improvements to a home? You said that very quickly and we couldn't hear.
Okay, the, he, his question was about the changes between, it used to be that if you had substantial, what's considered substantial improvement. Substantial improvement would be when you try to improve your house more than 50 percent of what its actual structural value is.
And who determines the structural value?
Well, you have, there's like four methods by which that can be done. We, the FEMA, FEMA guideline, technical bulletins, and our ordinance is charging me, as a building official, to determine whether or not the numbers that you use are actually fair market value, but I have to, I will use the information that's provided to us, and technically, in the technical bulletin, it gives you several methods. You can use an appraiser, you can get an estimate, we can look at those, and it's charged against that technical bulletin about what you can, what's considered improvement and what's not. So it's a pretty drawn-out process. Now, the old one was one year for 50 percent, the new one is cumulative for two years.
For two years, okay. And is that...
So if you did, if your house was worth $60,000, and you did $15,000 one year, and then the next year you tried to do $20,000, then if your house was not already high enough, right, then you would have to bring it into compliance or that portion that you're trying to improve.
And is that determined when we request the permit?
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
Anyone else? Question or comment? Are we ready to move on to 3A, declare the public hearing? None, is that okay, Ms. Matt Porte?
Yes.
Alright, everybody understand where we are. Copies of the agenda, if you're still looking for one, are now in the back, as we talked about earlier. Alright, you still up?
Yep. So 3A is a statement of consistency. It says the town of Holden Beach Board of Commissioners hereby recommends approval of the 2018 flood maps and finds that FEMA has updated the town's flood insurance rate map firm, and that the town is required as a condition to continue eligibility in a national flood insurance program to adopt these maps. These maps are inconsistent with the current flood and town zoning maps contained within the Camel Land use plan, and that it is the public's interest because it will promote public health, safety, and general welfare within our community by establishing provisions to minimum public and private losses due to flood conditions within flood-prone areas. Upon approval by the Board of Commissioners, the Camel Land use plan will be deemed amended and should not require any additional requests or applications for amendments. So you need to approve this consistency statement so that you can go forward to the next phase, which would be the resolution.
And I'm assuming this, all three of these have been approved by the lawyer, our attorney?
Yeah, she's the one who reviewed the documents, and this is the consistency statement that came from the planning board who sent it forward.
Okay.
I move the statement of consistency be approved.
Second?
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's unanimous, Madam Clerk. Go ahead, Mr. Evans.
Alright. Next is the resolution to adopt the effective flood insurance study and its accompanying flood insurance rate maps. As everyone knows, the flood insurance map were made for public viewing for more than a six-month period, they've been on and on for years. Anyway, we had several, we had some appeals. The board shows under the statutes were allowed by FEMA to allow me to handle those appeals on behalf of the town. We sent them in, the appeals that we sent in, I believe all were approved, and so we had some map revisions that goes along with the FIS report that's on the back of that letter of final determination that you have. So this resolution, it says whereas the town of Holden Beach has enacted a flood damage prevention ordinance, control land development within all special flood hazard areas within the jurisdiction, including extraterritorial jurisdiction if applicable of the town and within the jurisdiction of any other communities whose governing body agrees by resolution to such applicability, and whereas in order to comply with the minimum criteria of the National Flood Insurance Program, 44 CFR 60.3D and E, and North Carolina Session Law 2000-150, Senate Bill 1341, NCGS 143-215.51-61, the town of Holden Beach must adopt the effective flood insurance study and its accompanying flood insurance rate maps, and whereas at the duty-held meeting on June 26, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Board recommended approval of the proposed adoption and the new flood maps, and whereas the town of Holden Beach conducted a duly-advertised public hearing on the draft amendments to the effective FIS and its accompanying firm at a special meeting of the Board of Commissioners on August 6, 2018, therefore be it ordained by the town of Holden Beach Board of Commissioners that the effective FIS and its accompanying firm are hereby adopted, adopted the sixth day of August of 2018.
Is there a motion?
I move the board approve Resolution 1809, Resolution to Adopt the Effective Flood Insurance Study and Its Accompanying Flood Insurance Rate Maps Firm.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's unanimous, Madam Clerk. Alright, anything else we need to do on that, Madam Clerk?
Yes, we need to do C of the actual ordinance.
Yeah, the ordinance itself.
Alright, anybody wanna make a motion?
I move that the board approve...
3C.
Orders 18-13, in order to submitting the Holden Beach Court of Ordinances, Chapter 154, Flood Damage Prevention.
Second, anybody?
Second.
Alright, discussion, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Again, it's unanimous, Madam Clerk. Those of you following us on the agenda?
Time coming.
We're on the agenda number four, public comments on agenda items. So if you want to speak about anything on the agenda, do we have a list?
We don't have one, sir. You cut fifty of us.
So we're not using that today?
No, this, you decide.
Oh, I decided today, okay. I decided to recognize you.
I saw it.
You come forward, please. Give us your name and so forth. I can't keep up with it.
Yes. Good afternoon, I'm Elaine Jordan. I live at 124 Sand Dollar Street. I work at 131 Ocean Boulevard West, General Counsel for the Coastal Companies. I am here to speak about agenda item number nine, dealing with the system development fees. My reason for being here is frankly because after July 1, building permit fees increased dramatically, just dramatically, and there was a lot of confusion, and then actually surprise, and in fact, shock. The reason what I handed out, I handed this out to you is this was on the website in March of 2018. If you look through it, you can see why perhaps there was confusion and surprise and shock, because when you read through it, it gives really no notice, or at least understanding that what we've got coming up is a huge or potential increase to building permit fees. And I look at the questions that you all have put in your agenda packet for number nine, and it seems to me that there's perhaps some of the same confusion and surprise among yourselves. And I applaud you for asking those questions, and I am sure that they will get answered. The problem is that we need to have them answered, and we need to fix this problem, and it can be fixed. If you look at other localities throughout this region, they all had the same statutory mandate, but that didn't mean, for example, Brunswick County didn't increase their fees at all. Ocean Isle Beach increased theirs just a little bit. I know that Southport had an engineering study that if you used the maximum, could have increased them as much as Holden Beach, if not perhaps more, and they didn't do that. Holden Beach enacted, took the engineering study, that was in a sub-sub link on the website, and increased building permit fees to the maximum. If you look at House Bill 436, it says it should be narrowly construed to ensure that system development fees do not unduly burden new development. I would submit, commissioners, that the building permit application fees being requested now will absolutely unduly burden new development. They're not required, and we ask that you not only ask and answer the questions that you have posed, but fix this problem. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Entering is our town attorney, thank you. I know you had a tight schedule today. Anyone else want to speak to an agenda item? Some of you that have called me and burned my ears, I sure would like for you to give that same conversation to the public. It's a good opportunity. Anyone wanna speak? Alrighty. Lana Hewitt, alright.
I live at 133 Charlotte Street, and I'm also gonna speak about the permit fees that Elaine just spoke about. I called an appraiser and talked to an appraiser, and I don't know if you all took this into an account or not, but the appraiser said on some of these fees that are gonna affect the bedrooms that are more than three bedrooms, they're not gonna be able to appraise the house just because the fees went up that much. They have to wait till the market absorbs these fees and the prices of the houses go up before they can put that into place. So it's gonna affect a lot of the new construction appraisals negatively, so I hope that you will take that into account as well. And I agree with Elaine on several of the things she said, but I think my point today is regarding the appraisals and that the builders' bottom line, their margins are so narrow, they cannot afford to raise these permit fees that much, and then expect to get them from the customers. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews. Anyone else wish to speak? Okay.
Somebody raises their hand.
Mr. Brown?
Gerald Brown, and I do a little building and live on the island. And we were in the process, well, first of all, I'd like to know, why did the rates have to increase so much on building permits? I mean, and let me give you an example. We were working an estimate up for a gentleman. Typically, that house cost about $7,000 for a building permit. So I said, well, you know, I might better go up here and talk with him a little bit and find out the situation. He said, Gerald, you better tell the man 22,000. Okay? So we're going from a figure of seven to 22,000. Increase to $14,000 on one house? So I start, I said, you know, before I jump here, I wanna do a little research, you know, look around into several things. I see super-duper manager fees, you know? I see adding extra help with the management, and he's one of the highest-paid managers in the state. His salary is almost up with the governor. Now, this is for a little item. Somebody isn't paying attention. Now, we voted for you guys to get in here and look at us and ladies, but if this is the best you can do, I will assure you, next election, not one of you will be sitting. You know? And that's the feel of the town. I mean, I go to the chaff, well, I hear it at the chaff. You know, people are outraged. I mean, what were you thinking? You know, you could see a small increase, but you know, a new person comes in, just imagine, look, you slapping him to start with. The town, you know? I mean, you're gonna pay this if you want to join us, like I've got mine. Here's what you've got to do if you're gonna get yours. It's not fair. All this capital improvement, sure, we need them, we're growing town, you know? But it should be a shared cost. Everyone should participate. You see what I'm saying? Not just the new guys coming in. Let's be fair about things. That's my little piece.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Yes, sir?
My name's Rick Nelson, I work for the Coastal Companies, do not own property on the island now, I have a previous property. Three questions, um, my first question, which I know won't be answered directly, is, did the Commissioners actually do the calculations? Were they aware of the actual numbers when this information was presented to them, or was it presented with a, with a broad stroke and not an understanding of what the actual numbers meant? I would hope the answer would be no, but that may not be the case. The second point I want to make is I want to make sure it's, it's clear that the impact this will have on the island. As a construction company, we are building houses on other islands currently and on Holden Beach, and I can tell you, based on the fees that we are facing, we are looking strongly at focusing work on other areas, so this is going to have a direct impact on the total economy of the island, not just on construction fees, it means loss in rental income, it means loss in real estate sales. I've got a homeowner that we're getting ready to start a house for, who owns four pieces of property on the island, he says he's not going to buy anything else here when he found out about this, because he's being impacted on his new house. So this is not just affecting permits, so I don't want everybody to think, oh, let the contractors handle it, you know, it's, it's going to affect everybody, it affects the entire island. And I guess I'd say, um, well, I, I think that pretty much, I've summed everything up there, I was going to, um, talk about what he just mentioned. To me, it would be fair if it was shared across the entire island among all the residents, it does seem unfair for it to be strictly the burden of new construction. I'd like to understand that logic if that could be explained.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else? Anyone else want to speak? Alright, last call. Alright, we're going to move to Number Five on the agenda. Mr. Hewitt?
Yes, we've got a couple of guests from the Department of Transportation here to, uh, brief us up on the safety and proposed safety improvements for the Holden Beach Bridge. You guys can come on up to the front now.
You don't have any new bridge fees or anything, do you?
No.
Alright, good afternoon, I'm Chad Condon, NC DOT, I've also got with me Anthony Law, and we are your local NC DOT folks, so we're not out of Raleigh. What, what I want to accomplish today, uh, we've had a bridge rehab project coming up in this area, uh, for the main bridge here, I'm going to kind of go into a little bit of a background, but I really want to get into the detail on the railing of the bridge, and, uh, it'll personalize the bridge on Holden Beach on how you want your bridge to look for the next thirty to fifty years. So just real quick, um, high-value bridge, the Holden Beach Bridge is considered a high-value bridge, uh, what is a high-value bridge? It's basically a bridge that's worth over twenty million dollars, uh, it provides key connectivity, and of course, here on the island, we know it connects the mainland. Uh, most of these do serve as a major evacuation route. Total value of these type bridges in the states around nine billion. So in twenty seventeen, our General Assembly passed additional funding to help preserve these bridges, and, uh, the bridge here at Holden Beach was selected as one of these bridges to, uh, do our preservation on. So what do we, uh, anticipate to gain out of this, you'll see on this chart here, it's basically just a, a graph with condition versus age on there, and basically you can see where Holden Beach is there with the stars in fair condition, uh, without any maintenance, it may be good for the next fifteen, twenty years before it needs replacement. When you talk about replacement, you're talking over a hundred million dollars probably for the structure, so we're able to utilize these funds, take it back up into a good condition, and it'll preserve it for thirty or, like I said, between that thirty and fifty years. So these monies are well worth it. Just a couple of pictures that we had in the file here. So the scope of the work of this project, and I will, I will say, we have already attempted to let this once, there is a lot of work in the area, as everybody knows, if you heard the news about Oak Island was one of them, Cape Fer Memorial Bridge was one of them, so the bids are coming back high, we looked at those bids, and we did give you, it's a sheet that looks like this one here. You'll see that, uh, when we got those bids and opened them up, they were, the lowest bid was eighty-four percent of our estimate, so we've decided to re-look at some of the work, and, uh, we're going to pull the fender system out, we're going to replace the fender system, but we're going to put it with the one in Ocean Isle Beach, try to get a better price on the fender, the fender came back really high. But one thing that we want to add into this project will be the railing system, but the other work that includes is just some basic repairs on the substructure, which is the, uh, caps and columns, any types of cracks, I'm going to put corrosion protection in there, you're going to have a new concrete deck surface on top, it's going to look like a brand-new bridge when you start riding over, uh, expansion joints, and then the new railing. Uh, the existing railing out there today does not meet, uh, today's current standards for pedestrian or cycling, and with this proposal, it will. So, and basically what you have here, our existing railing that's out there today, the concrete railing, is only twenty-seven inches high. A brand-new structure that goes in today is fifty-four inches high. Our federal requirements is forty-eight, and that's what we're proposing to take this to, because we're very limited based on the existing barrier. It's only twelve inches wide at the base and six inches wide at the top, so in order to attach something to the existing barrier, it's kind of critical how high we can get it. And we felt like these two options here were the two best options, and, uh, basically the first option you see on your left are horizontal bars, and the option on the right are vertical bars. And I'll show you kind of example what it can look like, this is the vertical bar option, uh, this one is not quite the height we need to set it at. It'll just be, uh, maybe a foot taller than that, but you can kind of gauge your look there. This is a, the horizontal look, it'll have three rails versus two. And the reason I took this picture, this picture is on Surf City that they're just now installing right now, you can kind of see Surf City decided to go with aluminum finish. This has a, um, powder-coated finish to a black finish. Uh, one thing that, the reason why Surf City decided to go with aluminum was because of items like this, if you have birds and stuff on it, it'll be a lot of maintenance cleanup. Uh, that's just a, uh, that kind of gives you a vertical look, it's not quite the look there, but you can kind of see what it looks like in the aluminum finish. So what we're needing from the town is feedback on what the town prefers. Uh, like I said, this is going to give the, the, the bridge the look for the next thirty or so more years, and, uh, it's really what you want, and you can finish that any color that you choose. The, um, the intent is to re-let this project come September, and the sooner we can get information back, we can put that, those guidelines into this contract. And I just threw a lot of information at you really quick, but please ask any questions.
I got a couple of questions, if I may. The safety rail module, if you will, is going to be included as part of the whole bridge repair contract, right?
Yes, sir.
Less some of the work that you were going to do on the dolphins underneath the...
Yes, sir.
Do you have an estimate on what that particular module is, is going, how much is the rail going to cost? Have you got a...
I don't have that information yet, hold on here, where's that other hand at? It's, it's between one and a half and two million.
Okay, that, that's, that's close enough.
Yes, and, and this, and this funds is paying for a hundred percent of that.
I, I got you, um, my second question is that this is a, this is a desired, not a required, safety improvement, it's a recommendation. Is there going to be any penalty for the town or, or the state if, if it's not installed?
We would prefer it to be installed, it just comes down to safety for DOT, that safety is a priority.
And, and I, and I get that, you don't take some of the calls I do, um, up here for the road not being paved, my real question is, is what's, has there been any, let me, let me ask a pre, another preamble question. To my knowledge, there's not been any safety incidents on that bridge since it's been built. And that, that's just a statement I'll make, we, we don't have any, we don't have any knowledge at the staff level of anything being done. And to my question, to my point, what's the potential for reprogramming that safety money into paving Ocean Boulevard? I'm, and, and, and yeah, I want to make sure that the press gets that, because I'm desperate to make sure that, you know, I'll ask that question in public, you know, to forego, uh, a safety improvement in order to get the paving on Ocean Boulevard, that is a, I have had no, no complaints about it not being safe. Yeah, it'll take your breath when you ride a bicycle over it, but it was never designed as a pedestrian overpass onto the beach. That was never the design, ride a bike over that or, or to walk over. So, is, is it a requirement that those safety funds be stovepipe into a safety improvement, or is there potential to reprogram that money into an operational maintenance budget? Because if there's not, there's no need in asking the question.
Two, there, there are two different pots of money, so resurfacing and the bridge program monies, two different pots, and we can't swap them. I will, I will take a look at Ocean Boulevard and, uh, see where it stands on our resurfacing, so you, you're talking about the entire Ocean Boulevard?
Yes, because right now, right now, um, the east end of the beach where it was redirected and is McCray Street, that, we don't even have to, we don't have to spend money on speed limit signs down there, because the road has its own built-in speed bumps on it, and that's a state road.
Okay, when I, when I leave here, I will go out there and do, but let me, uh, let me take some time and get with our, uh, resurfacing program, and, uh, I'll get you an answer on the resurfacing.
Okay, thank you.
I want to inject something on that, the GSATs meetings, which you and, you were there at the last one.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, I'm sure you remember, every GSAT meeting, I bring it up about one-thirty, and my understanding was and is that March of two thousand nineteen, resurfacing is supposed to take place, so if you will re-verify that, that would be great.
But I think what you're needing from the board is, is, um, is which rail do they like if they've got to have a rail?
Yes.
And there's no cost to the town, obviously, I'm asking an obvious question, okay?
The, uh, the vertical rails, the one thing that came to our mind with the vertical rails, if you're driving and you're trying to look down the side, you'll be able to, you'll still have your views if you're looking straight through it, but if they're vertical and you're looking at an angle, you may start to lose your view of the horizon, if that makes sense. Let me go back. If you're at a steeper angle of this vertical rail, you may start to lose sight of the water or the sky. This, right there, you'll have, you can see through it right there in that picture.
And for that very reason, I prefer that one and have ever since I saw the first pictures. It also won't cause people who have problems with strobing, um, as they're driving along, and it can, it can sort of cause a strobing effect, the vertical one. So my personal opinion is, go with the parallel and go with the silver.
My, my view would be that the beauty of the island is when you cross the bridge, and you get to see the waterway, you can see the ocean, the island, and so I would prefer the vertical, but from that perspective, I would rather prefer the horizontal, for that reason.
Yeah, I, I agree.
This, this picture here is what I'm saying.
Yes, yeah.
Maybe I just kind of look at it a lot different, I don't know. When I was a little kid, I used to like horizontal things, because I used to be able to get up on them and climb up on them, and this beautiful sunset that we have here concerns me that somebody would climb up on these horizontal rails, and next thing you know, the camera and everything else would be down in the water, and that, but that's just, that's just me thinking, and that's what kind of a kid I was when I grew up, I guess. The other thing that, that I have a concern about, putting a railing on the bridge, what is that message, does that really send? I mean, I've heard the town manager explain to us that that bridge was never intended to have bicycles across it or wa, make it a walking bridge. When I visit the state of Florida, they design bridges in a way that they have bicycle lanes, and they, they encourage people to walk across the bridges and ride across the bridges and everything, and in the back of my head, I'm just saying to myself, do we send a message that, okay, folks, it's okay now, you can cross that bridge, because you've got a railing on there, you're not going to fall over, and that. So some of these concerns are in my head as I'm sitting here trying to make a decision, um, do I like the color of purple or do I like the color of red? And my main concern is from a safety perspective, for everybody to include the visitors and also include the residents here on the island, and that.
Well, Joe, we do currently see people riding their bikes across the bridge.
I'll tell you what, I bless every time, bless myself every time I see that.
I do too, but it does happen, as do mopeds.
But do we want to encourage that?
Mike, you got any comments?
Yeah, I, I'd make a motion that we adopt the horizontal railings.
A second. Well, I guess I got a motion, I got to move it along. Discussion? Alright, hearing none for clarification, um...
Color?
Well, well, yeah, we're going to get that, but, um, we are blessing the one part of your proposal only at this point in time, right?
That's correct.
Okay, alright, so Peter, you haven't said anything.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with, uh, what we're looking at right here, horizontal.
Alright, and what we're looking at is an aluminum finish, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is that, is that what you're, so an aluminum horizontal as pictured right there?
Well, there'll be three rails.
There are only three rails.
There are three rails.
We don't want it, that's what the building says.
I was confused, y'all were looking at this and I was looking at that, alright. Alright, so the motion is three rails like that and an aluminum finish, alright. Everybody understand, anybody not had an opportunity to say what they want to say? Alright, we're going to call for the vote then, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no.
No.
Alright, it's four to one, Joe's opposed, alright, motion carries, alright, what else would you Commissioners want to ask or move on? You still have the floor, sir.
If there's any other, other questions for DOT, I mean, I can take them.
Alright, I have a question for you in regards to the dolphins.
Yes.
Are they all wood? Are they all concrete or a combination, or what materials are you talking about?
I don't remember the plans for this one. My, my guess would be they're all wooden. Um, we replaced one here recently, it was all wooden, but I have to, I can send you the detail of what we were planning. And then, once we start putting the plans together to combine it with Ocean Isles, I'll s, we'll send the town a copy of all that. It's basically already designed, I just need to get that plan sheet.
Are there any alterations to the appearance or design of the bridge other than the rail change?
That's about it. Unless you have another idea, I mean, the, like I said, the, the bridge deck is gonna be basically a brand-new riding surface on it, and then you'll have the rail. So, drivers, it'll appear as a brand-new bridge when they drive across it.
How long do you anticipate that, taking that process taken?
So, the timeframe is about 18 months. Uh, the majority of the work will always will keep traffic on the bridge, it'll always be flowing. Uh, they can do lane closures. And if it's between, I'm gonna go off my memory here unless I pull it up, back behind the one that you see rejected bids, starting after Labor Day, they can have a lane closure during the day, Monday through Thursday, from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And then, they can have a lane closure from 7:00 PM at night to 6:00 AM in the morning. And then, from Friday, from 6:00 AM to Sunday, they cannot work on it at all. So, the weekends, no lane closures during the week, it's mainly at night and a little portion during the day. In the summertime, it goes to 100% at night, Monday through Thursday, and zero work during the weekends. These things can be a little confusing to read, uh, but, but like I said, one lane of traffic will always be open, and it'll definitely be in the off-hours. And one thing, uh, David, we need is a list of events from the town, and that way, we can put no work at all during those special events.
How about house moving? Is there any reason why, within the hours you described, that the house moving can continue?
It should be able to continue. I'll work through the district office on the house moving permits, but, yeah.
Chief Lane, you got any questions?
No, sir.
All right, are we through with these gentlemen for the present time? Thank you, and we look forward to enjoying our new asphalt real soon.
Yes, and I will get a check on that right now on the resurfacing.
Be sure you have your seat belts fastened tightly as you ride down to Boulevard.
Watch your hands.
Thanks for being here, gentlemen.
Thanks, y'all.
Thank you. All right, are we completed number five, or have we completed number five? We're moving to number six, waste and recycle issues. Mr. Padd, are you gonna address that?
Yes. Yes. Um, at the last, um, Board of Commissioners meeting in July, I asked for a special meeting because I felt that it was important for us to take decisions on the data and discussions and recommendations in the municipal solid waste staff study report that we all saw this past February, I believe, for the first time, and have had on again, off again discussions on. If we're going to actually have some changes to get into our system for 2019, we need to start driving things to a final, this is what we want, and then we can go further so that 2019, we have the changes in place in both contracts, as well as policies, procedures, ordinance changes. So, I put together a sort of a reminder to everybody of what the problems have been, uh, different decisions that are needed, that we can today come up with the board's position on as many of these as possible to take to the August VOCM, so that the public, the full public who comes to the evening meetings can then make their statements, say, yes, we like that, no, we don't like that, before we formally adopt things. So, you know, we really need some decisions on recycling, um, how we're doing it, the schedule for it, our, uh, number of cans per property, is this part of our problem? Rollback services, um, I had someone remind me that they would like a discussion again on yard waste. Um, how do we deal with the number of out-of-compliant waste situations happening at the sidewalks, where we've got bags and bags of waste next to overflowing bins, which of course is illegal? It's littering, it's a health and safety issue. So, what I'd like to do is go through and have the commissioners have us discuss some of the most important points that have been discussed previously and are in the solid waste report, so that we can make decisions on recycling, direction of ordinance rewrite, some audit processes, again, rollback services, and we can add yard waste as necessary. Is everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Cause I'll just keep talking now.
Keep on talking.
You have the floor, ma'am.
All right. Um, let's start with recycling. Um, if you go to page 51 and I have possible outputs at the top, and the recycling policy for the island, we've had two, two different options raised. One was the opt-out option where everybody is going to participate, you have a chance to opt-out. And the other was to continue the voluntary program. There was, at a couple meetings, discussion about the opt-out, and a problem with the opt-out that was raised is, we basically have to pay for all the cans, a can for every property, and then if people opt-out, uh, town manager's position is then we own those cans, and that's, that's an investment as well as a storage issue. So, do we wanna do opt-out knowing that, or do we wanna do vol, continue voluntary, trying to make voluntary more attractive? So, the first question to the commissioners is, which of these do we believe is the appropriate next step for us? Do we go to opt-out, or do we continue voluntary?
Well, with that, if we're gonna be on the hook for opting out, and, and that's what the companies are saying, then it's, I think it's pretty easy to say voluntary.
Yeah, because we gotta pay for the cans and then we have to store them as well.
I, I would just say, I, I was the, I was the advocate of the opt-out option. And of course, it's like everything else, you see a problem, you think you have a simple solution, and then the devil's in the details. So, once we got into finding out what the costs were and, and the options, uh, it seems clear to me, and I would, I would say that I would steal a line from the town manager, that we've had a referendum on whether or not we want to use recyclable, because there's only 300 people who've chosen to get into the program. So, it seems to me like a lot of people would opt-out, they, they wouldn't stay in the program. So, it seems clear to me that, that the, you know, the voluntary program is, is the one that the town should pursue.
One of the things that, and it's easy to see if you walk out here and you look at the chapel, the chapel has a, a blue can. It's overflowing. The chapel didn't do that. People drive by, and I watch it again and again and again, they see a blue can, they love recycling, they just don't wanna have it at their house, so they put it in somebody else's can. Or it's a renter who at home recycles all the time and wants to recycle, but doesn't know where to do it, doesn't know where the, the recycle bin is. We don't have the one on the beach anymore or on the island anymore, so they just find an empty can somewhere or, not even an empty one, they just pile it next to the other stuff. But I'm on the voluntary side in terms of, I don't, I find it too difficult to do the, the required. And a lot of people do not believe in it, and don't want it put down their throat.
I think voluntary's the way we have to go.
Yep. That was good, good, uh, discussion, but you're right, Mike.
So, we will put forward in a couple weeks voluntary. Now, in order to make recycle perhaps a little bit more attractive, because we do have the largest proportion of, um, homes on the island are, are rental, and one of the issues is that renters really, they can't deal with every other week pickup. They want their recycle picked up reliably. A lot of people come and it's off-week and they have a full can and they never can use it. So, the discussion, and there was, there was a sort of a cost out, that, you know, we could look at going to every Tuesday from the mid-May to the end of September timeframe, which is when we have twice-a-week trash pickup. So, you know, where we feel we have not, not always high season, but busy, busy enough season. Um, we had talked about either stay as it is or go to weekly. If we go to weekly, could we move it to Saturday instead of Tuesday? Uh, the town's investigation a few months ago suggested the recycle people, they cannot add Saturday pickup, so the option will be every Tuesday from mid-May to end of September, or we stay as is. If it's gonna go to every Tuesday from May to Sep, May through September, it adds somewhere about $20 to $25, as I recall, to the overall cost, which, you know, is just the math of a third of the year, you're gonna be doing it weekly. I know I would like to see weekly during season because I think it will help the renters a lot.
But that's an all, that's, for example, I don't rent, so somebody like me would
You're still gonna, yes.
Still have to do it weekly.
Yes.
And pay that extra cost.
Yeah. Um, the last count David had, we were over 400, if I remember right, we're over 400 now for recycle, and although he hadn't run the last numbers, a few months ago, he was surprised to find that renters actually somewhat outnumbered the permanent residents in terms of blue cans. Again, I think, I think our whole point is, we wanna make it better for the renters, for the rental properties, so that they have that blue can at the house for the people who come on island, and our diligence about recycling.
So, a question I've had is, if, if you've got more than a two-bedroom, you need two cans. Is there an issue with our saying the second can can be a recycle can? Doesn't have to be, but it can be?
Um, my personal opinion is as much wet waste, as I call it, as is generated in a four-bedroom house that would take two wet trash cans, um, I would be, I would, I would think we were pushing it to go to one recycle and one, one, one of each, yeah. I, I think recycle is in addition to the wet waste cans, the garbage cans.
Is this a yearly con-
There's only two of us in our house, but we overflow, we, we really pack the recycle every two weeks, but we don't have half a can every, every, once a week on the, on the regular solid waste. I just-
But you're two.
Hmm?
You're only two.
There are only two of us, yeah.
We're, we're the same way, but if-
And I think most of the island, except for rental houses, is-
But it's rental houses really that, that we're-
And they need both.
Yeah, they need both.
And remember, the, the extra can requirement is for rental properties only.
Yes.
Right.
Is this a yearly contract?
That's a three-year contract.
Three-year. You know-
But, but, but you can opt-out.
Yes.
The individual can opt-out, so it's not a three-year contract for the person who voluntarily subscribes.
Yeah, it's the, the town's solid waste contract.
Okay, yeah, yeah, good point. I mean, you know, making, it's a pretty substantial change to make the, you know, additional pickup. I, I was wondering if we could try that for one year and see what the, see what the impact was.
He, Greg Brinkley in the past had said that we could try it and then go back. Now, Greg Brinkley is not there anymore, he has a new replacement. The replacement said that he would honor the rates, but honestly, I didn't ask about the temporary basis.
But like you said, you can opt-out individually.
If you feel as if you don't want to do it, you can opt-out.
Yeah.
So, taking that into consideration, I, I would be in favor of expanding to, to a weekly pickup, and, and hopefully, that would even help with the other part of having trash cans that are, the regular trash cans overflowing and having the stuff. I mean, just driving here to the meeting today, you can, you can see Ocean Boulevard is not a pretty sight, with all the trash cans that are out there and, and, uh-
And bags by the road.
The overflow and the bags, yeah. So, I, for, for the $25, uh, I, I am in the program, so I'm not, I'm not imposing anything on somebody that I'm not imposing on myself. I would, uh, I would be in favor of the weekly pickup.
I'm in the program too, but I'll pay the 25 for weekly.
I, I am too, and I agree.
Only to help the, the rentals do it weekly.
Right.
Yep.
Cause they're the real, the ones that wanna do the recycle, but they just don't have a can to do it in.
Well, I may be admitting things, but there are weekends when I have company that we put an awful lot of wine bottles in there, and we could use weekly during the summer.
Yep.
So, I, I'm for weekly during the summer season.
I agree.
I think, I think the weekly's a good idea. I really do.
Okay.
I think it's gonna help everybody.
Okay.
Now, do we know we can do this on Saturday?
No, only on Tuesday.
Just on Tuesdays?
Yeah. Only on Tuesday. Okay, um-
We'll, we'll need to just follow up and check our contract on the recycle piece of it to see what type of flexibility or what's required for that section, the recycle.
And I, I'm sorry, but I imagine also, if we do institute this, we'll have to get some cooperation and, and collaboration from the rental agencies to inform people that it's, you know, the blue, the blue can is on Tuesdays every week, and the other trash pickup is twice a week.
Yeah.
Yeah, good point.
Okay, um, I just want to point out that, and not with specifics right now on here's an example ordinance, but there, I mean, Heather did include on page 53, chapter 50 of solid waste ordinance, and, um, it's, it, it's a very, David actually talking to me termed it, it was a very polite document, and there's a lot of shoulds and would-be nicest and things, and, um, you know, I think, I, I believe that we need to rework this ordinance, um, with, of course, the town attorney's opinion as well. Um, but we need to better define all the different waste types, um, firm up the policies, make some strong suggestions about the time to put it at the curb, and the time to have those cans back from the curb, where containers are to be stored, because the recommendation of the solid waste team was, the corrals don't serve a purpose anymore because Waste Industries has said, we will not take the bins out of corrals. So, um, our, I think our actual direction is that cans should be under or up at houses, and that is where we would like them to be because of blowing hazard, as well as, let's be frank, if your car can heat up to 120 degrees really quickly by sitting in the sun, those black trash cans heat up to 120 really fast in the sun. And I'm a biker and a walker, and the stench sometimes in high summer is something to behold. You know, so getting them back from the sidewalk in a more shaded, protected area actually is, is a nice thing for people who are out and about. Um, we really need to clarify what constitutes sizable violations, and have some enforcement policy and fines better described. I want to do this in a way that we can educate, 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 get the word out well in advance of starting next season, so that hopefully, we won't have a big enforcement issue. Everybody will get the message multiple times, take the actions necessary, and we will next year have a much better scenario on Tuesdays and Saturdays than we have had this season. So, um, I would simply like the commissioners to authorize that we do some work on the ordinances to try to improve them, and start bringing these suggestions to the commissioners probably in September.
So, would it make sense to push this to P and Z and get their help to, to do exactly what you're saying, to update this?
Do, I, I'm not sure we need, do we need P and Z? Uh, no, I don't think so. Uh, no, I don't think so. I think this is public works, um, town staff. Um, I've, I've offered to write out my sort of thinking and give it to them so that, you know, they can look at things. You know, I've, I looked at the state, state law and, you know, state law does have regulations on placing of trash in municipal limits and they have enforcement of ordinance directions so we can, you know, stay within state law easily. But, you know, again, get some rules around this that people will understand that repeated violations are going to lead to citations and fines. And again, enough in advance of next year's season so that people will have a chance to better plan and educate the incoming renters and themselves if they're second homeowners.
Good.
I, I would suggest that if we were going down, going to go down that road, that we're gonna have to hire someone to be an enforcement agent. So, we should have, we should look at what the cost of a new hire to do enforcement, the code enforcement officer, and where that code enforcement officer should be placed. Is he under the supervision of the inspector on the, on the codes? Or is he under the supervision of police department, uh, under, you know, enforcement of health and safety? So, it's just something, if we're gonna go this way, that's just one other thing I think we need to consider.
Okay, and I, I, I don't disagree with you, Mike, but let's see where we get on the ordinance and then we will make a note of that and have that discussion. Fair enough?
Fair enough.
Does that also include the rollback service that currently takes place on the Boulevard?
Roll, rollback is a whole different topic. We aren't to that yet.
Okay.
But rollback is a, is a sore point right now.
Right now enforcement is, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah.
Right now, it's, uh, Tim does the enforcement, right?
Right.
That, that true, Tim?
We, uh, if we, if we see areas of two-lane trash or if we notice where it looks like we have a home and we don't have enough trash cans or we notice, uh, if it doesn't have enough trash cans, we go back and review it and we either contact the property owner or send it away.
You have the authority to inspect though, right? Does your department not have the authority to inspect the house if it's thought to be in violation?
Uh, I don't think I have the authority to go into the house, but I, you know, I mean-
Unproperly.
We have the information that tells us if they have the number of trash cans they're supposed to have. We can see that, you know, just by looking at the information that they have. We don't have the authority, I don't think that I could come up with any way to get me into the house to see if they're gonna block us out with that.
No.
No.
I'd, I'd ask the town manager's input if you, I think we'd get the town manager's input as to whether or not town staff should be doing this work on the, I think, or should it go to P and Z? Or will we, will you need additional help for it?
Um, I, I see it as an iterative process. Um, you know, when in, whenever you're working on something like this, take it all the way down to the ground, see what you got in terms of nuts and bolts and then build it back up. One of the things that we're, um, currently developing um, as part of, of a more formal process on evaluating more than just a, a subjective windshield tour of, do they have trash out beside the road as an indicator of compliance with the extra can ordinance? We're assembling information, um, at the, at the data set level that'll allow for easier identification of compliance, non-compliance in terms of cans. We're, we're, um, pretty close to having a data set developed, um, probably be a week, uh, excuse me, another month before it's finalized. That'll make it, um, a lot easier, um, in terms of what it takes to meet the extra can ordinance, um, uh, requirement. Um, instead of it being, you gotta go down the road and see who's got more wine bottles, you know, in their recycling can. Um, so that's a, that's, that's the, that's the, that's a fundamental data set that we need to establish before we start, um, pinning solutions on the wall. And I'd like to have that developed accurately so we can assess how, how bad the circumstance is. Now, what we see out on Ocean Boulevard is certainly indicative of a, of a, uh, less than desirable service delivery, um, provision. Um, but that's, that has its source in several systemic, um, uh, problems there. But I don't think I answered your question.
But I was actually more concerned about, uh, giving the staff the role of tearing the, the ordinance apart. And examining that, is that something you, you're okay with the staff doing? Or would that be a bit, would you think that's better, planning a zoning board role and then feed it to you or?
I think Mr. Clemmons is the belly button that we tag on doing that. He's the public works director and he, he has the, um, that's his department. Sanitation is his department.
So, you'd let him do that?
We can, we can facilitate his efforts there, but, um, it would be helpful if perhaps there were some, uh, specifics that were identified. I know that, um, if we're talking about the, the types of limitations, you know, this is a very, this is a very kind ordinance and it's more than twenty-five years old as far as it relates to, um, how the ordinance is enforced, you know, back in the early nineties. The town wasn't as developed as it is. Now, the, the solid waste demands weren't as intense and it was, um, a time when you could go by and say, um, hey, you, you, you need to get your can in order there and take a kinder, gentler approach. The, the fact of the matter is that the, the order of magnitude on those types of violations, um, you know, w- we need a different tool in order to cope with that, so. But, but we need to start with where the violation is because the trash out beside the road isn't just rental properties, you know? It could be-
For the weekend.
I had my fifteen siblings down for the weekend kinda thing.
Well, I, I mean, we've had the problem, um, on and off for months about, we got beyond the yard waste pickup window and there are properties that still have tied together bundles of palm fronds sitting on their property, I guess, waiting for October.
Right.
And what do we do when somebody puts out two old rocking chairs and they sit there for two weeks? And, and we have these instances, so, you know, it's, and, and it's, it's not just once in a blue moon. It, it happens quite often. So, these kinds of things do need to be better defined about, you know, like, what is the length of time that it, it's too long and it needs to be taken care of? Or, you know, you have a fine or we arrange for it, we as the town arrange for it to be picked up and you get charged, you know, something. That's what I mean by, we need to figure out how we want to do this, not to penalize, just to penalize, but to take care of the problem. The ordinance should be about taking care of the problem in the long run. And again, I, I'm perfectly happy to send some ideas and wording from different things I've read that we might look at. And any of the commissioners could do the same. Just send them in, I guess, to Heather or, or to Chris, whichever is preferable.
To Clark.
Clark.
Yeah.
Okay. I think David, in response to John's question, just told you that the audit procedure for the one-can per two-bedroom requirement for rentals is well underway.
It, it's gonna take some data truthing too, but we're, we're, we're making good progress on that. Um, specifically, that I was talking to the, the ordinances is, is okay, but paragraph E, um, in O fifty oh four that talks about, um, compliance, I mean, it, it uses words like consistently fa- found incapable of properly securing their containers, may receive a written notice and those so at, will be so asked to correct their compliance. Uh, that doesn't work. I, you know, I mean, it's just, it's not gonna work.
Yep.
And we need to, i- if, if, we, we need to have some way, some mechanism to do that. And, and the template, I may be wrong in applying the template, was the cabana ordinance, um, compliance mechanism that we put in. We tried to be nice and pick stuff up and kept educating people or attempting to educate the people, uh, on, on those cabanas left out overnight and it didn't work. So, we had to have a mechanism in order to effect that type of behavior change. And I am not one to use a stick to start popping people with in order to bring compliance. Paragraph E just doesn't do it, you know, totally.
Okay. Um, before we talk about rollback service, cause that's kinda the hard one, just going back to yard waste pickup. What, my memory was that it ended up, the evaluation is that the yard waste pickup was actually being used considerably more than anybody envisioned and we were going to keep it for the foreseeable future, not eliminate it. Now, is that not?
That was, that was my understanding.
Okay, and that efforts were gonna be made to keep trying, keep educating people on how many bundles they could have and how it has to be secured, tied together and everything. And our contractor was actually helping by keeping track of how much is done wrong versus right. But we were still keeping that because it was a service that people did want and were using.
Yes, because we only had a portion of the spring pickup to occur and don't have the fall one, has, that happened, that hasn't happened yet, the fall pickup.
So, should we revisit this early next year just to make sure that it's being used as much as it was being used early?
Sure.
And, but at the moment, it's something that does seem to be desired by a certain percentage of residents and homeowners.
Right. I think we need to continue to monitor it.
Continue to monitor, okay.
Yep.
Right.
Okay. Now, rollback services, um, with a preference, of course, always not to increase our budget. And I've just, I tried to put everything I could, every permutation I could think of of how we might do this, but, but I'm just interested in what each commissioner thinks is the best solution to rollback. When is it really needed? What's our solution here? Um, if you go to an island that doesn't have rollback on Saturdays, it's a pretty frightening place. So, um-
I think it's frightening right now.
Yeah.
Yes, it's frightening with rollback. I agree with you.
Or you'll see our garbage cans all over the place. Because the garbage cans are put out on Saturday night in many cases and some, sometimes on Sun- Sunday and that.
Yeah, we all have, also have a significant number of homes that are weakened home, vacation homes for people. They're not renting. My street has more than half of them, they're not rentals and they're not permanent residents. And they're the ones that every week, they, when they go home on Sunday, they leave the can out and it's there till they come back unless I roll it back.
Right, but you, so-
And I think we have a lot of houses like that, but they're just not here to roll it back. And so, if you, if we don't roll it back, they're not gonna get rolled back unless some neighbor is friend enough to roll, you know, go around and roll six or eight cans back.
But I think the discussion, and I would agree, that on the Boulevard, that rollback service that we have now, isn't working. Forget about-
That's true.
Expanding it, cause the, what we have now absolutely is not working, in my opinion. I don't-
Go down the Boulevard. If I could add, uh, to the commissioners, I think that there was a question from someone, um, if, uh, the trash truck goes by, the occupants haven't rolled the can down to the road in time to get the trash truck, and they do after the trash truck goes by, does the rollback service roll the can back up to the house? They do not do that. And the, the logic there is that if it was, you know, if a time length goes by and the house isn't occupied, well, then it's not just that the trash stays until Tuesday and somebody else comes in. I mean, it could stay up there for a longer time. So, but the question is, is the rollback guys, don't roll full cans up to the ru- up back to the house if the trash truck has been missed?
And, and, okay, if we would define in our ordinance as other municipalities and islands do that, you know, you don't put the can out until five or six the night before and it needs to be pulled back by a certain hour the next day, then rollback should push back those, and those full cans because they can't sit out at the road for two, three, four days or longer.
That is in the ordinance now. That is written in the ordinance, ordinance now.
It is, it is, it's, it's written in the archived nice sweet ordinance, yes.
That we're not even enforcing it kindly, right, so.
Well, it's, it's, there's a pushback, yeah, it's, it's, it's an, it's a should sort of ordinance. So, I believe that rollback should roll back full cans. If new renters come in and they're confronted with all full cans, I assume they will call the management company and say, "I don't have any trash bin room. What am I supposed to do?" And it will be taken care of. I, I mean, I'm interested in other people's opinion.
Not to delve off on the possibilities of unknown, but, um, I have had a conversation with the rollback contractor and he hypothesized what might be the effect of in addition, or maybe not, not in addition to. Um, and I know that my solid waste report recommends getting rid of the corrals next to the road. The hypothesis that he presented was what if we had it mandatory for corrals to be out at the road and the contractor did roll out on trash pickup, the, the night before trash pickup days and then did roll back the next day? And of course, my question was, well, what does that mean in terms of budget? And his response to me was that, in his case, since it's a time issue, that he wouldn't foresee it being any more expensive because the cans would be at the road now and you don't have to push it all the way back to the house. Now, it's gonna make the beach look different and I just offer that up for discussion. You know, it's a matter of, am I gonna have to push the cans eighty feet back to the house? Or am I just taking them, you know, the fifteen to twenty feet back and forth to the, um, to the curb? Just-
What, what do we?
I don't know that, if that'll work.
What's the cost now? Can, can, what do we pay for the rollback?
Thirty, thirty-five, thirty-four thousand dollars roughly. You know, Oak Island, um, in your report, Oak Island actually charges property owners, um, to bring it down and push it back.
I think theirs is a contract fee, but I don't know.
No, they, they charge property, yeah, they charge property owners. It says in your report, three hundred dollars for a four-bedroom or less and three hundred and sixty dollars for five bedrooms or more. So, I s- and I, I didn't know if that was all year or what, but it's a charge. My, my problem, David, with the corral thing is again, getting back to, and we've all, we've all seen it, when a storm hits and you have cans in a corral near the street and the wind picks them up and tosses them, it, it's a problem. That's why securing them under or near the house is a better place for them, unless there's some specific way to build a corral that is then gonna be mandated where it holds those cans in high winds and storms. Um, and I mean, right now, we have corrals as close to the road as a foot and there's some pretty old rickety ones. And then we have others that are beautifully built that are like twenty feet back. Um, so, again, there's no consistency and I question whether or not they will hold the cans, which is a big part of the problem on the island when we have- which is a big part of the problem on the island when we have storms.
Yeah, that's true, because you have the recycling bins as well. Yeah. Do the, uh, on Ocean Boulevard, the cost, I guess, is thirty-two thousand, you had indicated, David? Does the town pick that thirty-two thousand up, or do, do the people that use that service, do they pay for it?
That's paid for from the occupancy tax.
The occupancy, occupancy tax.
For the town.
Okay.
That's brought up a lot, right? I mean, obviously, Oak, Oak Island, they charge the person, you know, the homeowner, right? Not, it's not a, because I bring, I, I, you know, you and I are paying for that through the occupancy tax. Or paying for it, one way or another, because mon, money is fungible.
Coming out of the town's coffers.
Money is fungible, so, we are paying for it.
Um, again, rollback is a hard one. I, I mean, I actually wondered if, if what we, I've been through these, and I know if you make a bad pick, we could really have a mess next year. And I wondered, can we rely on renters to pull back on Tuesdays? So, we really only need, I'm seeing people go, "No."
I don't know if I can speak, but I don't have a...
You can't speak a, at the end of the meeting, but, um, you know, do, do we need it both days? Or if we're going to have rollback, should we say we are just going to do, um, Tuesdays and Saturdays during season, and not all Tuesdays plus Saturdays during season? I've heard, I've heard quite a few residents say that they don't, they don't think rollback is necessary. Of course, I look down the island, and I know what rollback means on a weekend during season. But, is the attitude that we don't need rollback except for season?
I'd say, yeah, I like the idea of, we, we need, you need it when you need it. So, charge people for, for what, the service that they're using. So, basically, Oak Island is, you know, charging extra, obviously, for that rollback, and they're, and they're charging the people that are using it.
Well, it just, I don't know, the definite, it's, in here, it just says property owners. Now, I don't know if that means they keep a list, um, that, you know, you're the people who get the service and you're the people that don't.
Who paid.
It's Ocean Boulevard.
And on Oak Island?
Oh, I don't know.
No, no, Oak, I, I just read the notes and the, that Oak Island actually charges, but I didn't know if this was, you know, you, you, you can opt out. I don't know if it's an opt-out or not. I can imagine that that would probably cause a record-keeping issue for somebody. But, you know, I don't know if that's possible to do or not.
Refresh my memory, where is that in the study?
Um, okay. Um, your comparis, where, where were all the comparisons? Okay, it's in twenty-three? Twenty-three, twenty-three, municipality, Oak Island. Rollback, yes, through contract with property owners paying.
Yes, and I do not know if that is a contract with the town or if it's an individual contract. I bel, I am inclined to, um, it's been a while since I looked at this, to think that this is directly with the property owners like we do our recycling, but I don't, I, I would, I would have to verify that.
Mike?
Yes, I, I hope, I hope we can put this to bed, but, but thi, this is just my thought. I've listened to everybody, we've kicked this around. This is at least the third or fourth time we've, we've tried to do it. It seems to me that it all comes down back to enforcement. We can sit here and pass any type of ordinance we want, but if the cans don't actually get back and get out when they're supposed to, what good is it? And it's going to, and it's going to vary, right? I mean, you're going to have people that are very cognizant of the rules and, and feel that Ocean Boulevard and the side streets and everything else, they should take care of it, and their neighbors will help out. And then there are other people that just don't pay attention to the rules, right? And so, the cans are going to be out there, and they're not going to be out there. So, my suggestion would be to leave the status quo as it is until we enforce the new rules. And then we see what the new rules bring. And if the new rules require us to do something else, then we should do it. But it all comes down to people actually following the rule. Putting it out when they're supposed to put it out, take it back when they're supposed to take it back. And if the only way you can get people to do that is to hit them with a fine every so often, then that's what we have to do. But what we're doing here is, no matter what rule we make up, we're still going to be at the mercy of people's compliance. And you're going to need somebody to enforce that compliance if it's not done voluntarily. So, that's, that's my position on this subject.
So, your preference is just rollback service, maintain the status quo until we've gone through a year of the...
Education and enforcement. And then we see what has to be done. If, if we need to, you know, do something differently, if we have to start fining people, then that's what we have to do.
And whatever we do, we have to give the, the people sufficient time to make the adjustment.
No question about it. It's, it's, it's not to punish people, it's just to get the town to look the way I think everybody sitting in those seats would like the town to look.
Is everybody in agreement on that?
Uh, that's where I was too, but I don't think, i, i, there's, there's a lot of homes that are in no position, there is no solution. There's no way they can ad, adhere to the rules, that's the problem.
I was one of them, I know.
Yeah, y, y, you know, so people, you know, it's the Saturday, they leave, you know, Saturday, Saturday, you know, the tra, trash is, is full, you know, i, i, there's...
Then it's unsolvable, and we should stop wasting our time talking about it.
No, the, the, offer a different solution is what Oak Island did. They, 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 uh, you know, created a solution where it would cost more money, and they got better service.
Okay, and, and so then, so then, let, let me just, we'll extrapolate that. So then, the people now who are, who are using the curbside pickup for the yard waste and so forth, then we're going to start to charge them too. Because, as you said about this fee, it's, it's coming out of the town's coffers, and in one way or the other, we're all paying for that, and we don't use it.
I'm okay with, I'm okay with that too, by the way. It's a user fee, so, so the people who use it should pay.
Okay.
David, can you just check with Oak Island about how theirs operates? I, I, I think rollback is something right now, at the moment, just say, leave it as is, but let's talk about it more maybe in a month or so. But I think through this one. Um, no, I, again, I, and again, if we make a bad pick on this one, it's going to make the island look really interesting next year. So, and that's not what we want to have happen.
Right, right.
Okay.
So, we're going to check out the user fee? All right, David's going to do it.
David's going to do that.
Good. We got a plan.
Okay, um, one of the things that was in the waste report, um, was the question, shouldn't rental management companies be responsible for hauling cans, full or empty, back from the curb after the established deadline? If there are full cans sitting around, are they the ones that need to come and haul that, haul that off because there's no place for the new renters to put trash? The rental agency responsibilities for renter education, of course, I know that the rental agencies give a lot of information to the renters, whether they read it or not. And I do believe that when we refine things, uh, the town can, should produce educational material for property owners and rental agents, so the rental agents have the up-to-date information to incorporate into their next-year packets. Um, so, this is, this is just, again, the education is going to be town to owners, to management companies, but we're going to have to do some pretty heavy education, and it's going to have to all be consistent messaging.
Yeah, I think the, the homeowner is, is responsible, not the rental agency. Now, if the rental agency wants to offer a service, that's fine. But the homeowner is responsible for, for the trash, not the agency.
Renters get their information from the rental management companies, not from the owners. So, the educational material of, here's what you've got, here's when it's supposed to go out, you know, here's what goes in a blue can, here's what goes in the other cans, that's part of, that's part of a packet that renters get, as I understand it, so that they know what they're supposed to do. They don't get that from property owners, they get it from the management companies. Correct, Mr. Mayor?
That's the way it works at my place.
But, yeah, that's information, it's, it's a, it's nice, but they're not responsible for what, you know, doesn't happen, or does happen.
Ultimately, responsibility falls back on the owner, which is one of the things we have to figure out in the ordinances and citations and fines, clearly. It's the owner of the house, and then if there's going to be an argument, it's going to need to be, or a negotiation, it's going to have to be between owners and the management companies.
Correct.
So, just to summarize, what we will present on the twenty-first or twenty-second, whenever the meeting is, voluntary recycling. Uh, we propose weekly on Tuesday during the summer, and every other Tuesday the rest, that yes, we should work on the ordinances to give them a bit more meat, um, more explanation, and more, more, uh, more information on citable violations, enforcement policy fines. The audit procedure for the one per two-bedroom is well underway and should be in about a month. Rollback service, we need to probably leave it as is for next year, but we're all going to think about it, and we need to develop the educational materials once we change some of these issue, these policies so that the rental agency, the rental management companies have the up-to-date in time to develop next year's materials. I put some draft timelines with key decision dates down. Um, I viewed it as, this is sort of as late as it can happen. Um, I was, I was discussing a bit with David, and he said, "Any educational material for property owners and rental agents is going to have to get to them before the end of the year."
And, and that was, I was thinking that was when it would need to be, but I'm not sure as to when the rental properties do their advertising package for the next year. I'd, I'd need, we'd need some validation on that.
Yeah. Um, again, these were sort of my way of thinking, not necessarily the best or the, the most accurate. So, um, refinement between now and the August B O C M, we can work out. And we all agreed that any thoughts we had on what should be in the ordinance for improvements, send those thoughts to Heather.
Yep.
And that's the end of my facilitation.
Nice show.
Any other comments?
Nope, thank you.
Are you ready to move forward to the next item on the agenda? Number seven. Which is, uh, regarding the parking question on the boat ramp location and other perceived issues regarding parking. This is on the agenda following communication that I received from North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission, uh, Deputy Director of Operations, Mr. Kristofferson. And I have given you commissioners a copy of what I have received that started this issue, uh, of concern. And summary was, they're getting complaints, uh, and their understanding of what our town is operating under, in regards to the existing rules and regulations that we have concerning parking. And, um, we have our police chief here, and we have our town manager here. And, um, my job is to report to you concerns as they come to me, and I've done that. And, Mr. Hewitt, I understand you and the police chief have done some research and want to share some information about that before we go much further in discussing this.
I, I can. Go ahead. I got you, Wayne.
Afternoon, everyone.
Afternoon.
I, I'm really not sure the origin of the complaints, complaint or complaints. Don't know how it got to wildlife. Don't know specifically what the complaint was, other than, my understanding is, is that the police department was supposedly writing parking tickets uh, on the wildlife boating ramp, which is state property. The only thing I can say concerning that is that, to date, the police department has written no such tickets on state property. So, my guess would be that someone may have gotten a parking ticket in the public area across from the wildlife ramp, which is town property, not state property. And they didn't appreciate it, and they knew somebody in wildlife and made the complaint, which resulted in the rather nasty email that the town received. Haven't seen or heard any follow-up since we got the email, but we did extensive research and went back as far as we could since the ordinance was enacted. And an area ticket has been written by my police department on the wildlife ramp, because we're all smart enough to know it's state property, and we can't do that.
I have a question. You, you say state property, where is, I don't see any signs. I went over there, I don't see any signs that says this, this is the beginning, this is state property.
Well, we all know that that parking area is state property. That is the state boat ramp. Whether there's a sign or not, we all know that. And we're not responsible for putting up state signs and that sort of thing. That would be their responsibility. All I can tell you is, we have not written any tickets on that boat ramp.
So, it's just under the bridge, basically, is state property?
Right there, under the bridge, right beside Dock House, the new Dock House Restaurant. That area to the left of that, where the two boat ramps are, that parking area is state property.
Does the state own any property on South Shore?
No.
I didn't thi, I checked, I didn't think so.
No, I mean, everything outside that parking area is town property.
I guess, when you say, chief, when you say parking area, is that the area where you can drive in? It's, it would be a cul-de-sac if you put houses around it. Is it that area there where all the no parking signs are?
Yes, would, no, well, there may be some no parking signs there.
Plenty of them.
Yeah, but, once you go in there and make that loop around, um, there's parking on two, well, basically, there're like three areas within that area that you can park a boat trailer.
Yeah, but, but are those areas where you can, specifically, where you can put the boat trailer? There's a sign there that says you can't park from here to there if you, unless you have a trailer attached, right?
Right.
Is that art property, or is that, is that the state property?
Now, the pavilion area, we had a problem with boat trailers being parked up there two, three years ago, and we actually did put some signs in the pavilion area saying, "No boats or trailers." But that's town property, not state property.
How did the state get any of the property? Did they buy it from the town, or did they take it by eminent domain?
Let me ask you that. What, what we're talking about is being referred to as state property. It is state right-of-way. That right-of-way falls within the footprint of the bridge. Okay, that's what it is. So, um, as, if I remember correctly, that, that bridge was actually built with federal money. So, but still, it is state right-of-way, and if I'm not mistaken, it's two hundred feet wide, um, across there.
It was state and federal money.
So, that, that's what we're talking about when we say state property. It's state right-of-way.
Right. But it, but in regards to the email, we've not written any tickets there.
Well, help me extrapolate this because Ocean Boulevard's state-owned too and we write tickets if you park illegally on Ocean Boulevard, correct?
In the right-of-way, yes, sir.
So, is the same for Ocean Boulevard?
The ramp, let me, let me, let me, let me try to clarify this a little bit now. Because you're dealing with two different entities of the state. Ocean Boulevard is D O T. The wildlife ramp belongs to North Carolina Wildlife. Two different entities. D O T doesn't care if we write tickets on Ocean Boulevard, even if they got a complaint. Apparently, N C Wildlife has a problem with that.
Well, you're saying then, N C Wildlife, that's their, that's their jurisdiction under that bridge?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I'd like to see a map. First of all, this, this note is so inaccurate, you know. Come to our, boaters are being ticketed for parking at the state-owned boating access area on S Shore Boulevard. That's not true.
No, it's not true.
And South Shore Boulevard is not state-owned property.
Well, theoretically, I guess, the address of the ramp would probably be South Shore Boulevard because that's where South Shore starts. It's right there in that curve. So, it's kind of, it's, it's on South Shore Boulevard in terms of an address. But, I mean, obviously, it's not on South Shore Boulevard. It's under the bridge.
I'm just reading what the guy's.
Yeah, well, I know what, I know what was said. Trust me, I know what was said. But, you know.
Yeah, I kind of, you know, I'd, I'd just like to step in a little bit here. I've sent a, a number of, few emails, anyway, to the town manager and Chief. I'd like to thank you for doing the, the work to explore and investigate this and also the town, town manager, right? And that, because when I receive a letter like the mayor received, I mean, he sent it to us immediately and it's all looked kind of serious, real serious and that. So, we needed, I felt we needed to take some action real, real quick on this. Is this guy right? Is he wrong? What's going on here? And that. So, I think we could all figure out now that, you know, the, it's, to me, it's, 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 the letter was non-warranted to begin with, was not warranted. To me, it's suspicious and the facts just don't add up here on this. So, I could look at it in a real negative, negative way, but, you know, the Lord works in strange ways. And I just turned around and I said to myself, I said, you know, I went on and I looked at a couple of different things. I looked at the boating access locator, right, which I have, and it says there's a total of fifteen boat trailer spaces. Well, how many, how many parking, how many boats, vehicles and trailers do we find on the average weekend? Quite a few.
My guess would be upwards of forty.
Yeah.
Forty to fifty, most likely.
So, that immediately says to me that that ramp was put in years ago and that area, confined area, as I refer to it as, right? May have been adequate back then, but it ain't adequate now. Because if there's forty spaces, that means that, that, you know, you don't have to be a math scientist to figure this out. Where are these people parking? They're parking in the designated parking areas that we identified when the, when the, when the committee, the citizens committee was put forth together to identify the, the number of parking spots that we have in the town. So, all those vehicles and trailers are entering into that, you know, equation. Taking away the people coming to go to the beach, taking away their, their parking spots. So, I, I'd really like to, you know, respond to this and I'm recommending that we respond to this email that was sent to us. But not in a negative way, but just let's indicate what our findings are, what we found out, that we didn't have any tickets issued, okay? And, but let's try to turn this into a positive. The area is inadequate. There is insufficient parking. So, let's ask the state to assess and evaluate, come down, have a look at it and determine exactly what their recommendations are to, not twenty years ago, whenever that ramp was put in, but in today's world and today's environment with all the fishermen we have and all the boaters we have, what can be done about it? What are their recommendations and such? So, I really see this as, you know, let's, let's, let's take a positive step. Let's try to talk to the state about, you know, that that area is outdated and it needs to be corrected. Either, and I'm not saying move the ramp, but that could be one of their recommendations that they come up with. But we just can't keep going on and on and on because this problem's not going to get any, any better unless we work with the state on this or hopefully the state will work with us on it. Does that make sense?
I, I would just say, before, before we ask the state to come in and make an assessment of the parking, are we sure that they don't have other property that they could take control over and, and remove parking spaces that we now use for the people who live here or visit here? You know, sometimes when you ask somebody for help, it winds up not being helpful. What, what I would propose the board do is ask the mayor to respond with insisting that we know exactly what tickets got issued? Were they paid? Who were they, you know, when did, did this really happen? I don't think it really happened, but.
I think a polite response that we have checked our records and we can confirm that there have been no tickets issued in this area. I'm not sure what the confusion is, but we do not have any record of citations given. And, you know, a polite closure of this, be happy to discuss this further if you want and that's step one. It's like, just answer it politely. While he's done his checking, thank you, Chief.
No problem.
The mayor can go back. He knows how to write a diplomatic letter and, and close it out like that and then think about if there's some additional things we want to do.
Yeah, I'm still waiting to hear from the Attorney General, actually, but. I don't think we're going to.
I mean, he, he didn't cite any specific part of the ordinance that he thought we violated. And it's clear that a municipality has a right to control its parking, right? One sixty, general section.
Anything else?
All right, so you want me to write a letter?
The email came to you?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, a lot of phone calls and mail.
Well, what would, what would normally happen in a situation like this, Mr. Mayor? Who would respond?
I would, the mayor would bring it to the commissioners and follow the instructions of the commissioners. That's usually what takes place. And that's what will have to take place this time. If you want me out of it, that's no problem. The town attorney can write a letter, town manager, whatever you want to do.
Town manager, town attorney? Who's the best?
Yeah, I think we need to bring closure to it.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Chief. Is that everybody in consensus? Turn it over to the town attorney to write it. All right. We are now on number eight.
That's you.
Regarding town ordinance eighteen dash oh-seven, Mr. Butler and Mr. Freer.
Turn my page. The town ordinance current, currently, paragraph K, and says, "Additional violation. It shall be a violation of this chapter to leave standing any portion of a vehicle in a lawful parking area between the hours of two A M and five A M." And the issue itself, if we can take a step back in our journey of becoming commissioners, where we first started, this is one of, I guess, in February or March timeframe, that the recommendation was, was made for two A M to five A M. But somehow along the journey of life, the, there's, there should have been a little bit more documentation included in the ordinance. I had suggested back in March that vehicles shall not be permitted to park as, as a statement. Vehicles shall not be permitted to park in any beach access or any municipal designated parking areas between the hours of two A M and five A M. So, I was strictly referring back to the designated, and there's nine of them, designated parking areas in town. And that's what I remember and that. So, what ended up going into the ordinance was something that maybe was a little too simplistic to satisfy the two A M to five A M. And that, so I recommending that we further clarify that statement in paragraph K and include the statement that I just said. I think that, that words it perfectly. And it's clear for the nine designated parking areas, parking lots. Now, somebody, somebody had said to me, "Well, Joe, you know, what if, what if somebody parks in the right-of-way on a lot? Then what are we going to do?" Well, this verbiage says that that person can do that. Park in the right-of-way. You guys remember back in February, March time, timeframe?
Mm-hmm.
And this is the first step, so, right. So, it, so it becomes an issue of people parking in the middle of the night in right-of-way. We can address that as needed.
Right.
Yep.
You know, we, we can look at, after the season is over, we said that we would have a look at some of the recommendations that we put in place pertaining to parking and that we would assess and evaluate, are they working or aren't they working? Do we need to do anything additional or do we need to take town-owned properties and convert them to additional parking? Well, when the committee got together and everything, we decided, the committee decided that we have sufficient parking in town and that we didn't have to go any further. But we would make that judgment call after what we referred to as phase one of the parking project. And then if we had to, we would consider going to phase two of the parking project.
Done?
Okay. I, I would, I would just suggest that, that we go, as you said, we go back to the very beginning. We, we had the, the parking, the citizens committee make recommendations. We, as a group, heard this at least three times at the Board of Commissioners. At one point, you, you came in with a sheet of eight or nine suggestions of the parking, you know, how to implement it, right? We went down, we went through those item by item. We asked the town attorney to take a look at them and to put language that would be both enforceable and fit into what we, what we intended to do. Then we discussed these things. And this was all in conjunction with trying to limit people from parking in right-of-ways. After having three meetings and after discussing all the various options that we came up with in the language, we determined as a group that we would limit changing the statute. We would leave the same statute in place when it came to right-of-way parking because that gave anybody the ability to protect their own property without the town having to change its enforcement. All you had to do is put shrubbery or a fence up that would fit into the statute and, and you wouldn't have any parking, body parking there. We also decided, because the statute, the statute at that time had a seventy-two hour, that you couldn't park for more than seventy-two hours, the easiest, most effective, less complicated way to do it would be just to take out that seventy-two hour parking and put no parking from two to five. So, my, my position then and my position now is that we took the least intrusive and complicated way to achieve the goals that were set out by the advisory committee and we instituted it by making the limited changes that we made. I would still say, and I would ask the people out there to comment on this in a public comment, that would we prefer to have someone park his or her automobile under the bridge between two to five? Or would you prefer them, after they're told by the police that they can't park there, to say, "Okay," and then go park in the nearest, alongside a house, the nearest right-of-way? Because if you change the language to what you're suggesting, there is no enforcement in a, in a personal property person's right-of-way, right? So, now, at two-thirty in the morning, somebody just parks his car next to my house because he can't park under the bridge. I don't think that's really what we intended. I think what we have now is what we intended. And if there's a little blip in the, somewhere, we can't, we can't take care of every eventuality, but the current language takes care of the vast majority in the best way possible. That's my position. The problem is, in Mr. Holden's former household next door, has five violations every single night. If they're parking at the right-of-way from two to five, they're renting. And that's their rental area. That's where they park. But they're in there every single night. And the island is covered with people whose cars are in the right-of-way when they park overnight at their own home. And I don't see us giving all those guys tickets for, for saying you can't park in your right-of-way on your property from two to five in the morning.
We have a, a number of residents, full-time people, that, that have a need to park in that right-of-way.
But I, okay, going back, I thought, I thought one of our intents was, as we were going through all the discussion of how close you could put fences, ropes, potted plants and everything, is that the way that an owner sort of declares that this right-of-way is not open for parking is to put the shrubbery or the potted plants or whatever and then that declares it to be, you know, not for parking. It, it wasn't that, the road we went down with the debate about being able to put the ropes and posts closer and two feet and everything? Okay. So, if somebody is saying, "You don't park in my, this is not a legal parking place," they will have pots or something up that is with that. It was, these two were linked together as we wrote this, as we agreed this. I re, I do remember that. So, is it a reaffirmation that, that it's like, "Okay, guys, no designation, no special stuff, then it's allowed for parking?" And only if you, as an owner, have made some special designation, is it, people are not supposed to park there?
I, I guess the question, Chief, the, the simple question is this, right? Is our police department issuing summonses from two to five o'clock in the morning for parking in the right-of-way next to homes?
No, sir.
They're not.
And the only thing I would submit is this, and I don't really think you need to revise the ordinance. I mean, if you don't want parking between two and five in the public areas, just leave it like you've already got it and then it'll work out just fine. My department, believe it or not, we're all educated, both, and we all have good common sense and we exercise extreme amounts of discretion. And it's our decision whether we write a ticket anywhere or not. But I can assure you that the rental houses that have vehicles parked in their right-of-ways, the house next to this collector that has vehicles parked in their right-of-way because they're rented, those folks aren't going to get a ticket between two and five. And if you're under the bridge, good luck and God bless.
Okay.
Or if you're down on the east end, good luck and God bless. Anywhere else that's public parking, you're going to get a ticket.
But it needs to say public parking, not, or public. But it's all public parking. That's the point. It's all public parking.
It's all public parking.
So, so, so I would.
But we're able to, we're able to figure that out.
Yeah. So, so I, I guess I would ask you, John, the same question that Joe had. If, if your neighbor is saying they got five tickets and the chief says they're not giving out any tickets, have you ever seen a ticket? Have you, has anybody ever produced a ticket? Oh, I've only got one, one, one fellow who had a trailer, a boat trailer for five years and he parked it. He said he got a ticket, but I've not seen, no, they're not getting tickets. But they're in what would be viewed by the law as they're in a no parking from two to five in the morning. I, I'll go, I'll go back to what the chief said. The policemen, the policemen have discretion. They know what the, what the intent of the rule is and they're going to enforce it with that intent. If, if we haven't had somebody come up to us with a, with a complaint, again, we went through this any number of times and we, we did a lot of work to try to get it to be what, what we intended, right? We wanted people to be able to.
And we have to be consistent. We have to be consistent. You know, Chief, Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, but there were, in the public lot, right, there were eight citations issued and eight warnings. And I really like the idea of issuing a warning before we issue a citation.
If the person is there, that's possible. If the person is not there, that's not possible.
The only documentation that I had, there was one citation that was issued in the street right, right-of-way. That was it. So, I think we got that problem resolved. We got that cleared, cleared away. Right? And I just want to make sure that, because we have, we have folks that, that have a need to park. to park in that right-of-way.
We actually have one house, I think it was on Brunswick Avenue, if they can't park there at night, they can't park in there at all. That's the only place they park. And they're within 15 feet of their house, so they, they're always, every night, the people who are living there are parking within 15 feet of the pavement.
They they don't have any part, they don't have a driveway?
Not under the house. They're they're built from the ground up, and they're not more than 25 feet away from the street. So if they got a 15-foot car, it's in the right-of-way every night. And there's four cars they got, and, you know, they fill up their yard up.
Again.
And I just wanna make sure those guys don't get tickets, that's all.
As long as the wheels aren't on the pavement.
If the chief does that, if we have that understanding, we're fine.
They're most likely not gonna get a ticket.
So, so chief.
If they're on the pavement, they're most likely gonna get a ticket.
So chief, I heard you say that you're okay, you're okay with the with the with the wording that's currently in the ordinance?
Yes, sir.
And that you'll, you can comply with that, okay.
I don't think that the citizens' station changed anything as far as enforcement goes, so it would just be an exercise in utility on the county part.
Okay.
Especially since you're already addressing.
Yeah, as long as, as long as we're not ticketing people, I'm okay.
So you're gonna ticket people in the public areas?
From 2:00 to 5:00?
2:00 to 5:00?
2:00 to 5:00.
Yeah.
So how do you explain to that person why you didn't ticket them in the, in the right-of-way? So they're not in the public parking areas.
Yeah.
They're gonna give tickets in the public parking areas, which is not in the right-of-way.
That was the whole intent, right? To designate the nine areas that we have, and I keep going back to that.
That's what I'm saying.
But chief, if if somebody's parked underneath the bridge at 2:00, 2:00 in the morning, they would get a ticket?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's a separate ordinance.
That's a separate ordinance on myself.
Okay. So we got that covered? Okay, okay.
We got it, no problem.
Good. So we straightened out the fact that no one in the street right-of-way is gonna get a ticket from 2:00 to 5:00.
You say under the bridge, chief, are we talking about a a truck with a trailer behind it that's put a boat in? You're gonna give them a ticket for parking 2:00 to 5:00 in the morning?
Not in that, not in the NC Wildlife.
Thank you, thank you.
If they're in front of the pavilion from 2:00 to 5:00.
Oh, 2:00 to 5:00.
They're up, they're trailer, and, uh, everything else, yes, they're in the, but if they're in the NC Wildlife grounds there, they're not gonna get it.
Because we got a lot of fishermen out of 2:00 to 5:00.
All right, I think we got it resolved.
Okay.
End of story.
Okay, good.
Thank you. All right, are we ready to go to number nine?
Yeah, I'll I'll take the lead on this. Obviously, we heard, um, this is the asking for frequent will ask questions regarding the new system development fees for public water and sewer system. A lot of questions. These ant, these questions that are in the packet were some that we had, some that different town folks had. I think a couple of realtors were involved in developing these questions. So, yeah, I think it's it's very important that we take a look back and understand, as a community, what what that all was all was about, and understand the justification. Because it was a recommendation, tell me if I'm wrong, from the, from McGill, to to, you know, charge those fees. So I'd like to take a second look and and understand, you know, what those fees are all about and and why, and go from there.
I'd I'd comment, what, and I look back, the audit committee was asked to examine the document and the work by the engineering firm, to see, did they do the calculation correctly using the formulas that were allowed to be used? And the answer was yes, they did. So the maximum you could charge was the rate. They recommended that. And to me, the town manager also brought to the board that recommendation that we charge that fee. His discussion with me was that he and the, and Mr. Evans had discussed it at length and agreed that that was, in fact, the fee that should be charged. No, I don't recall any discussion about what will the impact be on on sale of land or rental or that, but I think we may have now a month's worth of experience. And I'd be curious, do we see already an impact that the number of permits have gone down because of this? Tim, you've got, in July, how many permits would you have rendered for building new houses?
Uh, the number of permits are.
For new homes?
They flow, some months are more than others. But right now, I think that, I think we may have collected that fee once. People are taking the permits back, people are changing the number of bedrooms, people are waiting to see if the board's going to, you know, change the fees. But I don't know that we've, you gotta remember, for the permits where there had exactly three bedrooms, we're now not collecting anything. The the fees that were originally on board are gone, which means that when we used to collect a permit fee for, say, a five-bedroom home, then we had those additional $1,200 to, $1,200 to $2,000 that was a tapped on to the original permit fees for those additional fees that had to do with sewer and those bedroom fees. Well, they went away. So if they come in here with three bedrooms, then you're not collecting anything.
So can I address that for a second? Just, I missed the public comment, again, I apologize for not being able to escape Judge Form, but this, the, what the board adopted fee schedule for the system development fees came out of a case called Quality Homes, and the legislature's solution was House Bill 436, which did provide enabling legislation to municipalities for system development fees, but required them to follow a very specific process for, one, determining what the need was for system development fees. It could not be done in-house, it had to be done by an outside professional that had accounting principles mastered. Then it had to be posted before the board could even consider it for 45 days for public comment. And it's my understanding from the public hearing that we had, which was a second requirement, that there were no comments received when it was placed out there for public comment. What was supposed to happen, if people had commented at that stage, was that the professional that the town was required by the statute to contract with would have taken each and every comment that had been received and reviewed their analysis, and then made a recommendation to the board based on those comments as to whether or not it should be, if their analysis changed as a result of those. So the lack of comments during that 45-day time period is probably why, on the backside of this, we are now hearing, I understand y'all are hearing a lot of comments about the fees. It had to be adopted by July 1st, that was a requirement in the statute. You, as a board, are able to make a, adopt a fee that is less than what the professional recommended, but it's important for the board to know that that recommendation came after the, not just the audit committee, but the outside professional looked through the infrastructure needs of this specific town, not towns all across the state, or not towns on municipal, municipalities on the coast, and determined what this town's needs were for collection for things that would impact the system in the future. So you certainly can re-address it, but what you're hearing from the building inspector is that the previous fees that the town charged as a result of that Quality Homes case must go away. This is the replacement for that. So it encompasses a lot of different moving parts that municipalities have been forced to adhere to based on House Bill 436.
And to answer your question, we collected two bedrooms, that's all we collected. $14,000 off, roughly $14,000. So we've got one permit that they picked up, but they've had to pay fees.
For a two-bedroom?
No, they've got a five-bedroom, they got, they got credit for three.
Oh, they got credit for three.
And I do believe that that particular one, they hadn't paid their water assessment fee, which was an additional $10,000, maybe, it's like $1,900, $800.
Does, does every permit get the three-bedroom exclusion?
Not all, I'm just going what they paid for. So far, I haven't found one that didn't have, hadn't already paid for three bedrooms.
Okay. But if I build a three-bedroom house today and I come in and and get a permit, it's gonna cost me $20,577?
Well, it's roughly somewhere around there, it's according to what, you know, what size the house is per square foot, and that kind of stuff.
If you had, if you hadn't paid your sewer fee previously.
If you hadn't bought it.
Right, right. But what what would be, what would be the cost if I did buy in previously and now I'm building a house, a three-bedroom house? What am I gonna be charged?
$5,000, that's what you pay for water.
Excuse me, say that again, what was the question?
The question is, if I did pay the original fee to hook up, and I got a candy cane on my property, now I'm decided to build a three-bedroom house. So I'm coming to Tim to tell him I'm gonna fill out the paperwork and I'm asking for a per permit, what's the cost for a three-bedroom?
For the, for the water or the cost for the building permit? See, we, we've gotten this big segment, we're calling this building permit fees, this is not building permit fees, it cannot be building permit fees. I can't collect it as a building permit fee, it'd be a violation of state law. This is, uh, this is a sewer development fee that we are collecting at the Building Inspector Department. The Building Inspector fees actually went down. They went down, they went down roughly $1,200 per permit. But the sewer development fees are now, you know, I mean, I guess, replacing those fees that weren't allowed to be charged, and now it's gone from roughly being $1,200 to $2,000, to being, depending on how many bedrooms you have, to being, uh, on average, $7,000 a bedroom. Depending on whether you paid the, depending on whether you'd already paid your water water fees, or when you'd already paid your sewer assessment fees. So the average cost for a five-bedroom house, if they've already paid both their water and their sewer, is is now roughly the $7,000, six to $7,000, plus almost $14,000. That's what that fee is, permit fees being $7,000, and then that other fee being that much.
The one house that paid, how much did they pay?
It was over, it was over $20,000, I believe, like $21,000 or $22,000.
You have a, you have a.
One of the reasons it was higher than it was because of veterans, is because it hadn't paid its water, water assessment, hadn't paid for the water yet. They had paid their sewer, so.
The concerns I've heard from a number of people is that the people are changing their minds and they won't be building here if they have to pay those fees at the rate we've got them currently.
So, so, reaction to the attorney, we, we didn't, you know, the town didn't respond within the 90-day public comment, right?
No, the town did everything.
No, no, that, that, the people, the people, the town, the town didn't. So now we're, we're kind of, you know, this process is kind of flipped. So now we're doing that now, and I think it's worth the exercise to do that, obviously. Hence, you know, and and to get out the information that the FAQ, so that they can, you know, the builders and the realtors and can make, you know, educated response. So unfortunately, that's where we are.
If we lose the buildings, we lose the taxes on those homes, and if they're rental homes, we lose the rental income. It could be very expensive if this impacts severely the tendency to build on the island. If it doesn't, we're fine. But if it does, it'll be expensive to us. I I guess I have two, two questions. The first one is, when you were explaining the differences between this community and another community, it was capital expenses and so forth. So when McGill did its computations, did they take into consideration the cost of all the revisions and rehabilitation we're doing to the sewer system, and the potential costs that were included in the new water tower, the second water tower?
The, the mitigation for the sewer repairs, this fee cannot be included in that. The second water tower, or the increased, that was a direct capital expense. That's a plan, that's in the capital improvement program, that was an allowable expense.
Okay, so it's more capacity-related than anything?
It's all capacity-related.
It's all added capacity.
It's all capacity.
Right, right.
So sores, we're not adding any capacity.
And then.
It's.
Well, wait, wait, let's, let's get an answer.
It's the cost of replacing capacity is what the costs are predicated on.
And my, my second question is, if you, if you can, you know, just a rough estimate, in the last three, four, five years, what's the average increase in revenue to the, to Holden Beach from new construction?
From a tax-based perspective? Our tax-based revenue has been fairly consistent, although it has increased some because of the, of the added increase. I would have to double-check that. It's fairly easy to get to, but I could, I would check, I'd have to check that to give you an absolutely correct answer. But it's not impressive.
I was gonna say, it's not, it's not enough to keep you awake at night if you lost that income.
Uh, Tim, you may wanna weigh in on the average, on the average.
Year-to-year.
Certificates of occupancy now, in terms of new homes being picked up on the tax scroll. I know that the last couple of year, we've had probably 30 in play at one time, so 15 new homes a year. I'd, I'd have to double-check that.
Structural value for the, added for the average taxes, if that counts the land, structural value ranges anywhere from $10 million to probably $22 million for structural value.
Per year?
Per year, depending on the size of the house, that's just for the.
And what, and what does that come to?
That's for the structural, that's for, just for the structural value.
And what does that come into actual dollars and cents if you're, if you're in the tax, the tax rate?
That's, that's figuring our average houses at.
Whatever.
$300,000.
Well, I could do, if it's about a million-dollar house, a million-dollar house is about $3,500, or town tax, and $5,000 plus for county tax.
So, but we don't click.
With county tax, I'm, I'm talking about dollars and cents to the, to the community here, not.
Talking in the range of $30,000 to $35,000, probably, as I would call it.
That's what we're talking about.
Yeah.
Okay.
We've discussed that before.
Yep.
It's $30,000 to $35,000 increase per year.
I just.
At $0.20 on the.
We've had a lot of discussion about the horrible economic impact, and I just wanted to get a better idea of what that economic impact is, so it's $35,000 per year.
But, but, and I agree, so that's.
Okay.
But we're still, we're kind of doing the process, not in the order that we should have.
No, 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 no. We did the process in the order.
The town, I'm saying.
But the, the people who are now interested.
Yep.
Didn't come forward with these complaints earlier. So we didn't do it wrong.
Right, right.
And we're, and we'll, I'll gladly do it again, but no, we didn't do it out of, out of.
Yep, yep, yeah, I see, use the word "we," I'm including the, again, the "we," the community.
Yeah, 'cause I, I've gotten, I've gotten complaints that suggested that the people who should have known about this process were never informed, claiming, claiming that they never knew about it. John, I'm, I'm sorry, but we publicized it, we had the meetings, we did it. If they weren't informed, it was because they, they didn't take the time to become informed, no different than what we talked about for two hours about rolling back here. The peo, people don't take the time to read what they're, what they're provided with to give them the information that they can make the decision on. I'm not gonna buy that it's my fault. Like I said, I'm willing, very willing, to go and and listen to all the complaints, but don't, don't try to blame us because we're doing it now.
Right, but with that said, we are going to.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay, that's all I.
So the question might be, how long would the board want to wait before it revisits it?
So what's on, what's on the agenda right now is, we're asking the town manager, and if he has to go to McGill, fine, is to answer, and I know we might not be able to exactly answer each one of these, but in good faith, answer these questions so, so we can take that next step.
I'm sure there might be a couple of questions that we've left off that McGill might recommend. I don't.
Mr. Town Manager, since we're now sort of through the process, and, you know, I viewed it as a kind of closed July 1st, will we have to pay McGill for doing some additional work for us? Figured so. Figured so. No, I, it's logical.
Yeah, yeah.
I have a question for the attorney, if it's okay with commissioners.
Sure, sure, sure.
If the commissioners were to change the permitting expenses in the near future, can they re- retroactively reimburse the people that got permits from the time that it was implemented until it was changed?
Permitting versus system development.
Yeah, system development.
Any, any way you wanna label it, can you go back to the way it was before it was passed?
I think it would have to be including for how, how, what you would, it would be a change to your fee schedule and your current budget, so, uh, 'cause those were adopted in accordance with the budget, so I think the answer is no.
Couldn't make it retroactive.
No.
But it's all in the same budget year, is it not?
It's, I'm happy to look at it, if I wasn't prepared for that question, but
Sorry.
I'm happy to look at it, but
That's an excellent question.
This is a very, very, um, specific statute that came out of lobbying by builders, um, insurance municipalities, uh, because, um, of the opinion of the court in quality homes, and it, um, it's not a perfect solution, and I don't think any municipal body would tell you that it's a perfect solution, but it did have a whole lot of public notice requirements in it in order to get the feedback in advance so that these experts that municipalities have required, contract with, perform this analysis, could then take that information and then provide it to you. You can not, you cannot go above the amount that they recommend, um, which for some towns was a hardship, um, but you can go below.
But the question is, if we decide to go below, can we go retroactive to-
I'm happy to look at it, my answer right now would be no.
Good question.
I'm sorry, make sure I understand that, you're saying that we could not lower the rate?
No, you can lower the rate.
Oh, okay.
The question was whether or not you could make that retroactive.
Oh, okay, yeah, you can't make it retroactive, yeah.
But I would certainly get to it and understand that it is perhaps the bill of the commissioners that, that be able to be retroactive.
Yep, okay, great.
For your information, it's amazing that the sunshine you enjoy coming in is not liquid.
Surprise, surprise.
All right, is there anything else on this, anything else on this?
I, I just need clarification on, uh, what the board's expectation to meet in order to answer these questions, because the twenty-first of August, for me to pull the answers for these questions back, I, I think that since the, um, that since these questions are follow-on to the official report rendered by McGill, that we need to, um, include, have them to assist with preparing these, uh, these answers to the questions. Um, specifically, um, the twenty-first is two weeks out, I don't know what their availability to respond to that type of request from me will be.
All right, so we can follow up and call them and find out.
Yeah, if you could fol- if you could follow up to the, to the board, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else? If not, we're gonna move to number ten. Mr. Freer, Mr. Fletcher?
Yeah, so, I, I mean, I'll start, and Mr. Fletcher is the Audit Committee Chairperson, but, um, I think there was some discussion and misunderstanding about how the Audit Committee, um, was, the role and how that was going to work out. And I thought we had, uh, at least a understanding that the, you know, there's two audits going on right now, right? There's an internal controls audit, and there's the annual audit. So there's two separate tracks, two separate companies. My understanding is, we had an understanding that, uh, the chairperson for the Audit Committee was going to be involved in every meeting with the internal control auditors, and that did not happen. Which, and there was some, a lot of discussions around that. And, uh, so we've taken this opportunity to, to clarify and, and codify, um, the internal control, the Audit Committee, um, involvement in, in, in the two different audits.
Yeah, I, I'll follow up with that. I, I think from two years or three years ago, when we, when the board formed an Audit Committee, re- is re- resurrecting what it had in the past. The intention was that the Audit Committee would support the board by doing things, assessing internal control, working with the auditor, selecting an auditor which the board would then approve, uh, looking at the final audit and that sort of thing. What's come to pass is more of, of an interpretation of the town that the only thing that the Audit Committee is supposed to do is look at the final report from the Audit Committee. And I've, I've worked with Audit Committees for a lot of years now, I don't know any others that do that. Uh, once the Audit Committee's report, uh, has, or once the auditor has reported finally, it's done. You can't back out of it, if it's public information, you can't change that. You can't work with, and I thought the board wanted the Audit Committee, an Audit Committee, four outsiders and one, one commissioner, to work with the auditor to make sure that issues were resolved and things went forward, and that internal controls were implemented properly, uh, that they existed and they were implemented. And so it was a sort of, uh, an easy arrangements. When I tried to meet with the Audit Committee to meet with the new auditor this year, I was told we couldn't do that, the board didn't want me to do that. The board only wanted me with the Audit Committee to meet with the auditor after the final audit report was issued. Now, last year, the Audit Committee didn't get the final audit report, never got it. This year, it didn't get it till January. Lots of things that happened in the meantime, that sort of thing. So my, my request is, and my, and you've, you've all had, uh, not only the, uh, the state, the two-page paper you have on really the, the current, if you will, the, uh-
Best practices, basically?
The Audit, the Audit Committee best practices today from the, uh, the Government Financial Officers Association in Chicago, whom, and I've talked with the CEO a number of times about these issues. I've gone to the LGC, talked to them, the League of Municipalities, talked to them, and auditors, chief auditors, well, senior partners of the big audit firms. And they're all in agreement that this best practice is, is the right way to go. So what I'm gonna do is ask that, just to clarify the role you want the Audit Committee to perform over the next few months, whoever you happen to have as an Audit Chair, becomes, if you will, the bylaws of the Audit Committee, just more specifically details it. And what I would ask, what I would move, I move that the BOC confirm the following bylaws for the Audit Committee. And I'd like to separate these from your decisions in parts, and the first has to do with the annual audit. With regard to the annual audit of the town's annual financial statements, the Audit Committee will provide oversight of the work performed by the independent accounting firm.
John, excuse me, one second.
Yes.
You, you-
Everybody, everybody has one of these on their table.
Yep.
I haven't seen it.
Oh, you're not the auditor.
And the public hasn't seen it?
No, they haven't.
No, may I make a comment? This was one of the very things that when we did the new proposed, um, procedures and things, that when we got documents at an actual meeting, we were not going to approve them at that meeting. We could discuss them for approval at the next meeting when the public sees it. So, this is another case of, I am confronted with something at the meeting that you're asking me to approve with no time to consider it, and the public hasn't seen it. And this goes against our proposed rules of how we're gonna operate, that we just all accept it.
So we just, last month, directed the town to have the Audit Committee Chairperson to be in all the meetings, and that did not happen. So this is a result of-
I, I'm gonna also say that in two thousand sixteen, and I have gone back and reread the ordinances, that the Audit Committee was tasked, not later than the first regular meeting in March, the BOC Audit Committee shall adopt and present to the BOC for confirmation, a modification or modification, bylaws setting forth such other policies and procedures that it shall deem necessary, which I believe is what this is, but it should be the entire committee that does it and agrees to it, to present to the board, I believe, not just the Chair, which, this is written, and it says, the Audit Committee at its next meeting will adopt these directions and bylaws, but the way I read thirty-twenty-six is the committee itself should have done this and presented it.
But it didn't have a meeting, it wasn't allowed to have a meeting in that timeframe.
The, the, you're correct, the ordinance, the town's existing ordinance does require that the Audit Committee adopt bylaws and then bring them to the Board of Commissioners for consideration. Um, I, I haven't seen the bylaws, I don't know what they say. But I have reviewed the Government Finance Officers Association, yeah, best practices, and there is another entity that might be better for a municipality, which is the Association of Local Government Auditors, because this, these best practices, one suggests the elimination of the sunshine, sunshine laws, but also, these best practices state that all members of the Audit Committee have to be members of the governing board. So, that's not how the Holden Beaches, and also, it's not how Wilmington, Greenville, Charlotte, Durham, Fayetteville, or Greensburg operate. They have a balance of governing board members, some have, um, citizens, some don't have citizens, they have other government. I mean, there's a myriad of ways that other Audit Committees have formed, and I did, after seeing this agenda, I'd, I'd reach out to lawyers across the state and take a poll as to how they have their Audit Committees, and I do have information, um, on that, would be happy to share it with you, but I have not seen the bylaws, but the town's existing ordinance do require that the Audit Committee adopt their bylaws in advance of bringing them to the board for their consideration, to answer your question.
But I said, I just asked to have an Audit Committee meeting and was denied.
By who?
I, I'd like to speak to that, 'cause you're saying I denied you. All I said was, I didn't say that the board or the Audit Committee was, that's not what I said. I said, the Audit Committee has never met with the auditor in the past, I'd feel more comfortable if the board was okay with that and in line with that. And, I, I never denied you from having a meeting, I can't do that. I have no role in doing that.
Effectively, you did, 'cause I, I value your inputs.
Well, if you had a problem, I wish you would've come back to me, I mean, that would've been-
And that's what I was asking, isn't the board-
No, I, I don't think the board has any issues with a value-added activity, but again, and I went back into this, that I was looking for your bylaws from two thousand sixteen, 'cause it was something that was supposed to be produced. Okay, I understand, they don't exist, and there's nothing wrong, again, I've done just a very fast read, but the entire Audit Committee is to develop the bylaws, and I would assume that the town attorney would also want to see them, and then bring them to the BOC, to a BOC, um, for our, any discussion and approval. It's, it's not the content, it's the procedure here.
Could I ask the board then to authorize the Chair of the Audit Committee to call a board, a Audit Committee meeting to do that? And not have to wait till the end of the fiscal year, when the, when the audit report is done?
You mean to have an Audit Committee meeting, to do your bylaws?
Just to do that.
Just to do your bylaws?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
The board doesn't need to do that, John, I'm sorry you felt that I, the board doesn't need to do that. You are the Chair of the meeting, you just call a meeting and I will put it out. All I did, I apologize if you misunderstood me, that was just, my advice was they've never done it before, so there was, I was asking why you wanted to.
I understood you say it needed board approval. I understood you said it needed board approval, and the board hadn't approved that.
That, I'm sorry.
If we can do that now, then I'll call a meeting of the Audit Committee.
Before the twenty-first.
In the breh, the twenty-first, and?
Yep, okay.
Yeah, we'll do that.
Good.
I, I have a question. Um, number two, page two, the Audit Committee Chair, alone or with another member of the Audit Committee, or the entire Audit Committee, may meet with an external firms hired, with any external firms hired to audit the town's financial statements and so forth and so on. And that sounds reasonable to me, I don't, doesn't bother me a whole lot, but what does concern me is the authority that may be implied by whoever that representative is at that meeting with the auditors. In other words, is it, is the person or persons there representing the committee, members of our committee, can they give any directives or, or requests? Or are they there specifically for observation?
To collect information that you can bring back to the board. The Audit Committee represents the board, it supports the board and its oversight.
Well, that, what you just said's what scares me, represents the board.
Well, it represents the board in collecting information to bring back to the board, it makes, has no authority to make decisions.
Or suggest decisions, right? I mean, what, what I'm trying to say is, I don't have a problem with, with the board authorizing people to go monitor and be, you know, oversee and that kinda thing. But I do have a concern on any committee appointed by the Commissioners feeling like they have any kind of authority to represent the wishes of the board unless they're directed to do so specifically.
It's not representing the wishes, it's not the spokesperson for the board, it's an, if you will, investigator for the board that brings information back to the board.
Yeah, and I, and, and I'm not trying to be mean either, but to come in, as I come out of one meeting, run over here with thirty seconds or so to spare and sit down and find this, I haven't had a chance to look at it, not that I get a chance to vote on it, but it seems like we could get this in the hands of the Commissioners and, and the Mayor and so forth in time to at least read it before this. And it was about to be a motion and packed it on, I hadn't seen it, you know, that kinda stuff bothers me. But anyway, we know it's all in good intentions.
Call an emergency order.
So, so, so based on our last, the last meeting, John, I'm, I'm just a little confused here. So you're, you're being invited to the meetings now, whether it's an internal order, audit, or whatever kinda audit it is? Is that happening from the last meeting?
Uh, with the new auditor, yes.
Okay.
I sat with the new auditor.
And, and you sat with the, you sat with the internal auditor too, correct, John?
After the review began.
Okay.
When I was informed-
Okay, so that's in place.
Okay.
Okay, good.
However, to go smoothly in the future, the board needs to know what it wants that the Audit Committee to do and authorize it to be done.
Okay.
And I'll call a meeting of the Audit Committee immediately and, and then decide.
Maybe take into account what the Mayor said about making sure things are very clear.
Very clear, yeah, yeah.
About the boundaries.
However, whatever we decide, whatever the bylaws are, the board has the authority to change it at its next meeting.
The contract with the auditors, does it have to address, or does it address the possibility of, of the town having a representative at their meetings and participating?
It works for the board.
Which contract is, so we have two?
Either one of these auditors.
One has LGC language, one does not, but the question is whether or not, do they have to come and make a presentation for this?
No, what I'm asking is, the contract that the town has entered with these two entities, these two auditors, does it specifically say, or does it have to state, that we're going to have representatives in place, working with them and so forth? In other words, for me, here's a simple explanation. If a general contractor has a contractor with the owner to build a house, most general contractors don't want that owner walking around through jobs saying, "Put another nail up there." Uh, "Review that, I think that's supposed to be two inches instead of three." Auditors may not especially want more help free of charge, if you get what I'm saying.
Um, I do, the town does have an Audit Committee, which should be a signal to an auditor or a potential auditor that the Board of Commissioners has asked citizens that have a skill set to assist with the board's ultimate responsibility of governing the town's finances. Um, I don't think that the contract that I reviewed for either had a specific statement that said, "A member of the Audit Committee shall be present during, um, any of the um, interviews with staff." I, I don't recall seeing that. staff. I, I don't recall seeing that. I think you may have recalled.
Do we have to disclose that in, in our contractual arrangements?
No. I, I mean, it's an agency of the board, so it's the agency of the town. It's an advisory board.
All right.
The only person that can bind the town on that would be the town manager or whoever the board designates to bind the town from a contractual standpoint. But Audit Committee doesn't have to go and sign a contract. I don't know if that's what you're asking me.
Well, trying to further clarify, if I own an audit, if I own a company that's auditing the town of Holden Beach.
Yes.
And I send three or four down there to do it, and suddenly they walk in a room and there's five people there that are gonna be sitting there asking questions and making suggestions and so forth, it's likely it's gonna cost more time for my employees to be down there doing that work than had they gone down there and done it without the town's pointed assistance.
I'm designated on the, the contract as the point, as the point of contact, designated on the point of contact, as the person that pulls together documentation that's required for the audit. I mean...
There will, there will always need to be significant staff participation in anything that the auditor asks because of the nature of the record there.
Well, that's, that's a given, but...
Different question.
Different, totally, from what I'm asking.
You're asking if there are too many cooks in the kitchen, whether or not the...
That's a nice, that's a country way of saying it, yes.
I believe that at least one of the contracts calls for an hourly rate. So I think the answer to that in that contract would be yes.
If, if the board has the right Audit Chair, it's never gonna have a problem with that. Because the auditor is more than happy to talk with any Audit Committee member and make sure that everything is smooth through the audit. And if you'll know right away if it's not, then it's time to replace your Audit Chair.
All right, are we done with this one?
Yes, sir.
All right, I'll leave it.
Just, if I, I say one thing, that, that, John, I, I would ask that you have the Audit Committee meet and okay the proposed bylaws that you want in time, that they can be included in the next packet for the town meeting.
Absolutely, absolutely.
All right, now it's time for anyone in the audience who wants to speak and talk about anything you wanna talk about. On my right hand, a lady. Everybody's gonna get a chance.
I'm Dolly Mitchell, 132 Tarpin Drive. I, like Mayor Holden, have sat through many hours on trash pickup. I would just like to remind you, when you refer to rollback, that you are talk, and, we've been here since 76. Trash is worse right now than I've ever seen it. And I appreciate what you're doing. I'm not being critical of approaching it. Just remember that rollback is for OBW. We do not, and, and when you continually refer to that, it sounds like that applies to everyone. And I know you know that, but I just wanna make that clear. The other thing, I'm gonna open a little can of worms. And first of all, I know there's some Audit Committee members here today, and I've been to Audit Committee meetings, and I appreciate what those fellows, I don't think there's a woman on that at this time. At one point during this year, I pulled all of the special groups or committees to look at what are set up for bylaws for those groups. Under the Audit Committee, it actually says, if I, if I remember correctly, they serve for a term of one year. This year, I do not remember any advertisement for openings on that board. I do know that there were two people who did apply for, I think Pat's position on that board. In most cases, if you serve on a town committee, you come, you present yourself to the board in front of an audience of people like you. It's my understanding that your representative selected the person who presently serves in that capacity who replaced Pat. I think it is going to behoove you to go back and pull that, take a look at it, to be sure you're following what was originally passed three years ago. Again, I have been to Audit Committee meetings. I don't think, I appreciate the time, effort, and work that they're doing, but I'm not sure the guidelines, as they were originally written, are being followed. You did not select the new member. Your appointee selected the member based on his recommendations. The two applicants never came in this room and presented themselves to you. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm gonna still address this, this system development fee. Ms. Fox, I understand that you didn't hear my initial remarks, but what I passed out was that notice, and you can at least, if you read it, understand why everyone that was previously here in this room would not understand the impact that that was going to have. We are who we are now, and I'd ask you to look at the engineer's report and the conclusion where it says, "The town may elect to charge less than the cost justified system development fee documented in this report." That's what we're asking you to do. I don't think engineer, additional engineer analysis is required at all. The report says what the report says. The question is, does this town government body want to allow those fees to be less than what they, right now, as of July 1, being charged? They're a burden. They unduly burden new development. We, all these people that were here for various reasons, are asking you simply to charge less. And we think it is very much justified. And we very much appreciate your expedited consideration. As I can promise you, building permit applications are being withheld until that happens. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a comment about the same subject. I wanna point out, even though the town's attorney has, has reminded everybody that proper protocol was followed. That's not being argued. The question is about how much people knew at the time. I would make this point. I had, and I don't wanna offend anybody in the room, and I don't mean to throw anybody under the bus, but I don't know how to say this without mentioning certain names. I do know that I spoke to every member, every person in the Building Inspections Department that works for the town. They were all equally surprised when these numbers became public as the contractors were. If they, if they didn't know about it, how does the board expect the public to know about it? On top of that, the mayor's own construction company didn't even know about it. He was in all these meetings. So to argue that this, this information was public and was well-known is crazy. Just, just look at the facts. Look at who knew about it. Look what was known and understand, understood. And to say, just because there's no public comments, that, that the public, you know, shouldn't have it, have some say-so now, or that they knew what was going on? No, the public didn't know. They had the opportunity to know, but the information was so buried and so covered up that it was unknown. That's obvious.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, this is Regina Martin. I live at 1032 Ocean Boulevard West. I would like to thank you a lot, even though I know it took a lot of time today, for addressing our trash issue. I have sent pictures. I've done numerous things. David and I have talked several times. This is the worst that I have ever seen it in the seven years that I've lived here full-time on the boulevard. On Saturdays, Sundays, all the way into Mondays, because people haven't put out their receptacles, our boulevard looks like a trash dump. I'm almost ashamed to drive from the thousand block to the bridge. Some of the things you mentioned maybe would be corrective. Some of the things, the real estate companies, the owners, the RBOs, Airbnb, it's in all their literature. You cannot force a person to drag a can from under a house and put it out the street at the appropriate time. You can put a hundred signs in a house. You can remind them, like before, it can be on the town welfare. You're not gonna get everybody to comply. It's just not gonna happen. And I, I know it's in every packet, 'cause I see them all, 'cause we're in and out of about 45 houses every weekend. So as far as, as the education, maybe if you put it on the sign at the end of the beach, maybe more people will see, as you come onto the beach, maybe more people will see it. I don't know. But the real estate companies are, are making an effort. I will say, and, and this is for our mayor's benefit, but I have a couple of houses that are here.